Hi, I'm Pat Thatcher.
And I'm Margaret Gifford. We're from Sotheby's International Realty.
I was taking some homebuyers on a tour the other week. One of my familiarization tours of Falmouth. Brother, this is a gorgeous town we live in.
And we have more shoreline than any other town on the Cape. The gardens have been beautiful. The light is stunning. And the changing seasons bring exquisite color to the marshes.
It is a beautiful place to live. We are so lucky.
Nestled in a classic New England setting amid 200-year-old elm trees and charming colonial homes, stately sea captains' homes, and charming Cape Cod salt boxes, Shoreway Acres is a graceful blend of Cape Cod's past and present. Shoreway Acres, proud sponsor of Falmouth Community Television.[98.02]
Final settlement agreement, so there's no reason we can't finally release one of our executive session.
I want to defer to our town manager if he feels that's appropriate.
That's my understanding is because the agreement has been signed, I think it's, the only thing that I would just ask the board is I want to make certain that all the financial transactions are concluded.
Yes.
If that could be part of your motion with my affirming that those have been concluded prior to releasing the minutes.
Alright, so the motion is to approve and release upon the confirmation of the, the affirmation of the financials being done.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None, the ayes have it. Alright, well, we, our next is our summary of actions. We do have two hearings tonight, one at 7:30, one at 7:45, so we'll get through our summary actions and take a break when we get to the 7:30 time period. The first is an application for a special one-day liquor license. Actually, before we get there, there was one other announcement I did want to make, and I had put that on my list. And we have heard from quite a few residents very concerned about a needle exchange moving into the Town Hall area. And it's something that we are certainly looking into. I've had several conversations with Captain Dunn about it, we do know there's great concern. We have been informed that the group has no plans to have a needle exchange here, but that's not going to stop our pursuit of making sure that we really know exactly what is going to happen. That no plans can mean one thing and then plans change. And so the town manager's office will be getting more information to the town about that. But I just wanted to let people know that we certainly had heard from people and that we are going to be investigating it. Alright. So, special one-day liquor licenses, this is for On the Water Striper Fest in Marina Banchell. This is Saturday, September 24th, 2016.
Move approval.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, the ayes have it. Okay, the next are under administrative orders. We have a vote to accept a grant funding amount of $10,000. This is for the year fiscal 2016, the underage alcohol enforcement grant program.
Move approval, second.
Motion is second to approve. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Chief Dunn gets his check. Next is to authorize amendment to the Dog Park Memorandum of Understanding. Would you like to tell us a little bit, just so that we can get the word out there as to what you're looking for?
Over the last five years.
You have to identify yourself.
I'm sorry, Barbara Schneider. I am the president of the Falmouth Dog Parks Incorporated. And over the last five years, we've noticed a growing use of the dog park, especially in the winter months when it is much more difficult to take active dogs anywhere else. Last winter was absolutely incredible because we were one of the only places people could bring dogs and let them get exercise. So what started to happen is that people started to have their headlights pointing into the dog park and having that for light, because at 3:30 and 4:00 and 4:30 when people came home from work, they didn't have any choice. We started talking about this, I approached town manager and assistant town managers on this, and I started talking to Rocky Gomes, who's superintendent of parks. And I said, "We would like to try to look into lighting that would be not offensive to anyone in the neighborhood, but would work for just enough lighting to let people have some area lit in the park." So, we were successful in getting a grant from the Cape Cod Foundation's Fund for Animals, McGowan Fund for Animals. It helps toward it, we were successful in our annual campaign this year and are in a financial situation to be able to add some solar lighting. We'd like to add one solar light that would just light the entryway where everyone takes the leash off or puts the leash on, gets people from the handicap parking in safely, and see how that goes, and we might add a second light down at the parking lot if that really works well for a while. We are, we've been meeting with Solar One, which did all the solar lighting up in one of the suburbs of Boston. They lit a bike path where the lights come on as people actually ride the path, it's incredible. And we went to Mass Maritime and saw the lighting they have, which is amazing also. If you haven't seen it, it's impressive. So, we're looking into this, working on it, we think we've got numbers that we can afford and we would, all we need is the memorandum of understanding to be changed to say, instead of dawn to dusk, dawn to dusk or 8:00 PM, whichever is later. And we will make sure that the lighting goes off at 8 o'clock and would not be bothersome. We think that that's fair and it really provides a lot.
Any further discussion, any questions?
I make a motion that we approve the request in the dog park for the lighting, according to the parameters set forth in their memo.
The lighting is their issue, it's just the memorandum of understanding as to when it can be used, the dog park may open until 8:00. Motion?
A second.
A second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, thanks Barbara for all your work.
Okay, next item is the vote to approve the submission of a notice of project change to Massachusetts EPA to the widen, this is part of the widening of the Borns Pond inlet project. Mr. Patterson?
Yes, now, as I understand in reading through, that this is really just the addition of the study that was done on the flooding of that area around the bridge, or includes the bridge as well. Is that correct?
I think the project change actually is really just the fiscal description of where the project is going to occur.
To widen the bridge, widen the inlet.
Okay.
The original project didn't have it delineated as exactly where it was happening. And because it was a preliminary project, now this is the final, the next step in it, so we just had to be a little more formal in the project as to where it was happening.
Well, I've reviewed it and it seems to be very definitive, and so I move approval.
Motion is second to approve, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, the ayes have it. Next is to accept a donation from the Falmouth Road Race, the amount of $5,000, recreation department donation account.
I move approval with many thanks for the road race.
Second.
Motion is second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, the ayes have it. Okay, next we have special events, a number of recurring recommended events. And I can remind you that we have a group, a special events group who reviews these, they meet quarterly, and they have a number of events that they, that have happened in the past that they are recommending. You'll also notice that there are a few notable issues with some of them, but I'll just read through them. The Falmouth Village Association, the Easter Egg Scramble on Saturday, March 26th, Library Lawn, July 4th Bike and Carriage Parade on Main Street on July 4th, concerts in the park, Pegg Noonan Park on Fridays from July 1st to July 29th, movies in the park, Pegg Noonan Park on Wednesdays from July 6th to August 31st, the Trick or Treat Stroll, Village Queen to Main Street on Saturday, October 29th, the Holiday Stroll Queens Byway, Main Street, Pegg Noonan Park. Should we take a vote?
Yeah, I think that's, well, I would like to move approval on those six items.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the six items from the Falmouth Village Association, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We'll continue, the Seagull Six Road Race on Sunday, April 3rd, Liam McGuire's Irish Pub Almost Five Miler, Town Hall Square, Sunday, May 1st, the Falmouth Farmers Market Marina Park on Thursdays, May 26th to October 7th, and Tuesday, November 22nd, the Falmouth Art Market at Gus Canty Green on Thursdays from June 3rd to September 1st, the June Jog Falmouth Heights Beach to East Falmouth Elementary School on Sunday, June 5th, July 4th fireworks, Falmouth Heights Ball Field, Monday, July 4th at, on 2016. Mr. Drollet, you're here, would you like to say anything about the fireworks?
Tell it if you need to.
Just so you know, that in our budget, we did put a request into this selectman's line item to put $15,000 towards the fireworks.
Yes, Doug Drollet, he's found, chairman of Falmouth Fireworks, I did see that on the finance committee meetings, notes.
And we hope that does get voted by a town meeting, but we're hoping that that might drive you a little bit to a...
We'll work through that one thing at a time.
Mr. Chairman, just one brief comment, I just wanted to note, in the fireworks recommendation, it includes the board authorizing a, the town manager to approve a second rain date in the event severe weather conditions so require.
The primary rain date is July 5th, and if the second rain date is, the town manager will be authorized to come across that date.
I'd like to say something about that briefly, is on July, I think it's the last, it's the last 28th of June? You have a, we always have a meeting. Give me one second, please. I believe it's June, this year will be June 2016, June 24th, we have a meeting at approximately 9:30, one week before the fireworks, or 10 days to go over logistics, as we've had in the last five years, six years. And that will be the time that we will know through the weather reports if we have a hurricane coming like we did a couple of years ago. And that's why I asked for some leanings on the date. And of course, I will talk to Heather, Chief Dunn, the fire department, and anybody else that needs to be talked to at that time.
Thank you.
Excuse me, the fireworks is on July 4th?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Run, Jack Run, on, also on July 4th, Falmouth High School Field, Trotting Clark Field, Falmouth Road Race on Sunday, August 21st, Falmouth Rotary Club Craft Fair, Saturday and Sunday, September 3rd and September 4th, the Wounded Warrior Project, Thursday, September 22nd, and the Striper Fest on Saturday. Hold on that, so we have the others, items B through K.
I move approval of B through K.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, two hits on the Striper Fest, Ms. Moran?
I noticed from the notes that the Zuma Half Marathon and 10K at Seacrest proposed Old Silver Beach, Saturday, September 24th. There's a conflict with the Striper Fest on the same date, and it's specified that detail staffing cannot support both events.
Right, now see that we do not have the Zuma on our list of being recommended. We think we've gone back to them with suggestion of October 1st, and they'll come back with a second application if that date works though. Otherwise, we're not...
That was going to be my suggestion. Then no hold.
I move approval of L, the Striper Fest.
The Striper Fest?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, the ayes have it. Alright, we'll now move on to our first hearing. This is the application for the alteration of premises of an all-alcoholic common victual license. I need to read into our record the official notice of hearing. Notice is hereby given under chapter 138 of the general laws as amended that Woods Hole Golf Club, Inc. has applied for an alteration of premises of an all-alcoholic common victual annual liquor license located at 130 Quist Avenue, Woods Hole, Mass. Hearing will be held in Selectman's Meeting Room, Falmouth, Mass. on Falmouth Town Hall on Monday, January 25th, 2016 at 7:30 PM on the above application. For the applicant.
Thank you, members of the Board of Selectmen, I'm Bob Amet, I'm a Falmouth attorney. I represent Woods Hole Golf Club. With me tonight is Michael Lawrence, right over here. Mr. Lawrence is the executive director and general manager of the golf course, but perhaps more importantly, he's the manager named in the club's liquor license. The club's liquor license has for a couple of years now covered the entire golf course property, as allowed by Massachusetts law and is approved by the Board of Selectmen. In September of 2015, the golf club embarked on a major project. The 95-year-old clubhouse has been demolished and a new clubhouse is under construction. And because the new clubhouse, though in essentially the same location on the property and not too much bigger, despite those things, it is a change of premises, some of the room layout is different, so on. And so that requires the Board of Selectmen to approve a change of license. You have in your file the, the application which includes the floor plan of the new building, and I believe some perspectives. I'd like to show you a picture and give you copies of a picture showing what the new building looked like as the storm really was getting started on Saturday. It was actually a very beautiful scene. It would have been even better if there was an American flag, with some color, flying from the top of the steel. So the steel is all up and within the next couple of weeks, I think we're going to see that building start to be closed in. And it's an ambitious goal, but hopefully the Scanlon Company, Falmouth Builders, will be able to meet it, is to complete the building and have it be open to the membership on August 17th of, of this year. Now, as I mentioned, we need an amendment, an alteration to the licensed premises. This is somewhat of an unusual situation because we have a, the clubhouse under construction, but the pro shop is where for most of next year, some food service will come out of, and which is part of the licensed premises with the rest of the golf course. So, in the proposed description of the premises as altered that I have provided to you, I have started the description as follows. Clubhouse, parenthesis, under reconstruction, not to be reoccupied prior to issuance of use and occupancy permit by Falmouth Building Department, close parenthesis, and then including the specific areas of the clubhouse which are proposed to be licensed. And then going on with the exact same language that's in the present license about the pro shop and the rest of the 108 or so acres that are licensed. Now, the general laws, chapter 138, section 15A, which is your licensing statute, says that where there are no premises actually in existence at the time the application is made, the applicant may file with the local licensing authority a plan showing the actual dimensions of premises which are to be constructed on which a license is to be exercised, and the licensing authority may grant a license upon the condition that the license shall issue upon completion of the premises according to the plan. So, in this case, I've talked to the ABC Supervisor of Licensing, and he thought that this approach is perfectly fine, that you would renew the license, you've already voted to renew the license, but subject to the alteration of premises, which we're doing tonight. So, we're asking you to approve the new clubhouse to be licensed, point out that it can't be occupied until the building department says it's done, and then allow the issuance of the license for the rest of the golf course in the interim. I did put together a little packet that just gives you some more detail about the new clubhouse.
Thank you.
And suffice it to say, the, the membership of the clubhouse is very excited about this project, and it's finally coming to, to reality, hopefully to fruition on August 17th of, of this next year. Note that earlier today, I delivered to the, your office, all of the green cards that have been received. Everybody who was entitled to receive a notice has in fact received the notice that was, was sent. If there are any questions, Mr. Lawrence, or I would be happy to answer them. Hopefully, you'll see this as a positive change of alterations.
I do have a question, I mean, this is a very open facility, you know, with the veranda seating and tables and what have you. How do you plan to control any kind of casual underage drinking? I assume that youth will use this facility off and on, if not on a regular basis. How is that going to be managed?
Mr. Lawrence could answer that, or I could try whatever you'd like. Well, first of all, there's excellent management at the, at the club. Professional, full-time management, and not just Mr. Lawrence. He has a staff of full-time people, including David Zauner, who is the clubhouse manager, and a substantial staff that increases in size as the needs increase during the summer. The existing golf club has decks and patios, and the situation will be really no different than it is now. To the best of my knowledge, I'm not aware of an underage drinking situation being reported or being a problem to this board. I certainly don't think that there's been any such problem during Mr. Lawrence's years here. So, it is a perfectly good question. To have premises that consist of over 100 acres licensed is a great responsibility. The town of Falmouth has the same situation with its municipal course, and other courses in the area have the entire premises licensed. I hope I've answered your question, if you want more detail, we'll give you more. Of course, the people in charge, if not the entire crew, are TIPS trained.
I guess I'll open that, because I have no problem with the proposed clubhouse, but I just want to clarify as to where else is liquor going to be sold? I guess it will be sold during the, out of the pro shop during this renovation period. Is there an interest, because I don't think it's been in the past, of a cart serving patrons who are out on the course?
Well, there is a history of such, of a cart on the course. There's a history also of, during, during certain tournaments of liquor stations being set up on the course. Actually, I don't think any sales are made or money is exchanged, we're talking about membership events. And I believe one can already, pursuant to the license that exists, buy a beer at the halfway house in the pro shop. So, there's no change, no change to that. The club, I point out, has the proper signage, you know, it's on two sides of a street. Those things have been done to comply with the statutes.
Any other questions from the board? And the audience who'd like to speak on behalf of this applicant? Anyone who'd like to speak in opposition? Gil, you've made your presentation?
Yes, I just to point out the importance of the language that's been proposed to get the license issued with the, only the clubhouse would be restricted until it's complete.
I move, do we close the hearing?
Motion closed.
Second.
Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. So, close the hearing, and how would you like to proceed?
I move that we approve the modified application as submitted.
Second.
And again, with the stipulation, this is a temporary use, or temporary amendment of the building, and then, once the building is open, it'll be available to be used as a license. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, the ayes have it.
Nice building.
Alright, the next is another liquor license hearing. This is the application for the transfer of ownership of an all-alcoholic common victual license. This is from New Falmouth Golf LLC, doing business as the Golf Club Cape Cod, to the Sacconesic Golf Society LLC, doing business as TGC, 132 Falmouth Woods Road, East Falmouth. Do we have anyone from the applicant? Notice is hereby given under chapter 138 of the general laws as amended. The New Falmouth LLC, doing business as the Golf Club Cape Cod, has applied for transfer of ownership of an all-alcoholic restaurant license to Sacconesic Golf Club LLC, doing business as TGC, locate 132 Falmouth Woods Road, East Falmouth, O2536. Your hearing will be held in Selectman's Meeting Room, Falmouth Town Hall on Monday, January 25th, 2016, at 7:45. Good afternoon, good evening.
Good evening, everyone. Hi, my name's Charles Passios, I'm the manager for TGC. It's a simple transfer, there's been an ownership change of the golf club. As mentioned in the notice, New Falmouth Golf LLC, which owned the golf club of Cape Cod, is now owned by Sacconesic Golf Society LLC, and the club's name is changed slightly to just TGC, standing for the golf club. And it's just a request to transfer the license from one company to the next.
And this is the, just to make sure I know which golf club this is. This is the private one on the left-hand side as you come into Golf Woods Road?
It is, yes, correct.
Questions from the board?
Well, just could you describe who Sacconesic, I'll find the name here, Sacconesic Golf Society is?
Sacconesic Golf Society LLC is a, is a new company that was formed in November of 2015 to set up the purchase of the golf club of Cape Cod. It's made up of a handful of members from the golf club, the original golf club. So they're all, you know, participating and managing now their own club.
Patterson?
I noticed that you have two different owners in the application, but they're both listed at the same address. What's the reason for having two limited liability corporations co-owning this, when they seem to cohabitate the same?
Well, the applications are a little bit confusing at times when you're filling them out, so New Falmouth Golf LLC is the transferee over to Sacconesic Golf Society LLC. They both exist right now, New Falmouth Golf LLC is going to go away as soon as this license is transferred. If you read through the applications, I'm listed as, and I'm the sole manager of New Falmouth Golf LLC. John J. Lorendo Jr. is the, one of three managers of the new LLC, Sacconesic Golf Society. And I'm the manager of the license for the old club, I'll be the manager of the license for the new club. So that's, my name's in two different places there.
I'm not sure it matters to us, but why?
Why what?
Why are we doing all this?
Because the property was sold. So, what happened was the bank that held the mortgage for New Falmouth Golf LLC actually sold the paper to another entity.
Okay.
And so, at that time, these guys decided to step up, they bought the paper from the other guys. It was from there, ownership change.
Hey, any other questions from the board? Anyone from the public who'd like to speak on behalf of this applicant? Anyone who'd like to speak in opposition? Mr. Patterson?
I move, do we close the hearing?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. And what's the pleasure of the board?
I'm going to make a motion to approve the application for transfer of ownership.
Second.
Motion, a second to approve transfer of ownership, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, the ayes have it. Thank you. Okay, the next item on our agenda is a recurring event that was not reviewed by our public events group, and I want to give a little history from it. This is from the Falmouth Village Association, having to do with the Arts and Crafts Street Fair for July 13th. They had been requested to come up with an alternate location, to be proposed and discussed. They did not come to a meeting with that. Since then, they have come up with the information as to looking at Catherine Lee Bates as an alternate road. The group, the special events group, does not meet again for another three months. And so I would ask this board if they'd be willing to consider this application. I know we're bypassing our process, but the vendors do need to know more in advance than three months from now as to whether the event is going to occur. You should have a pages of some of the things in their alternate location discussion. I certainly have been the one pushing hardest for this to go to Catherine Lee Bates. I have been convinced in discussion with them that there's just no way it really does work there. The size of it would be increased so much to make it not the same project that it is now. My biggest concern was the safety of not having Main Street available as a safe passage. I have been assured that actually every time they do it, there is a roadway that is maintained through Main Street that a fire truck can get down, can get down on any of the corners. So I felt better about that. I also was aware that the parking on Catherine Lee Bates was greatly diminished last year than it had been in the past, through signage and through shuttles. Through signage and through shuttles, they were able to get people to park further away, and the illegal parking that had been happening on Catherine Lee Bates concerned me was not really happening nearly as much. I also know that we will be putting up, as a town, additional signage to getting, so we can get people to some of our satellite parking on Lawrence School and Mullin Hall, and this will be another technology that might be useful. So, I would hope that the board would consider this application for the Arts and Crafts Street Fair on July 13th.
Well, I thought that the, the significant reduction in the number of vendors was prohibitive, just even to consider it. It'd be a 70 percent reduction in the number of vendors that they could even, could be there, which would almost, and yet, the congestion doesn't really change much. All it did was really limit the space for vendors. And if you don't have enough vendors, then people won't, people won't come anyway. So, it was almost designing it to fail by putting it on Catherine Lee Bates. And, and I think too, that the Catherine Lee Bates bypass, so to speak, to Main Street is much more effective to stay open than if Main Street would stay open, because you still have all the traffic, you would have still had all the traffic on Main Street anyway. And so, I don't know. I think just in reading through all of the factors involved in their decision to stay where they are made a lot of sense to me.
Yeah, I have a, I have a question. It says shuttle available, but it seems to me that we should make a condition that shuttles be provided, because otherwise, I mean, I assume it would just be voluntary as to whether it happens or not. And if we're serious about trying to move more people to parking at Lawrence, for instance, then we ought to make it convenient for them, and, and they could put it out in their advertising that there will be shuttles from the Lawrence parking lot, and that should encourage people to, because I think anybody that goes to it, my wife is one of, you know, would not go there, I mean, we'd go to Lawrence, actually, voluntarily, because they know how congested, how difficult it is to find parking when that art fair is going on. So, anyway, so that's a thought that I would throw out.
I just read, the way I read that is that the shuttle would be available for people to use it. They will be providing it. On the lengthy page they have here, they're saying they will provide shuttles. They won't require everyone to use it because they might not park there, but that's the reason why.
Sure.
The term for availability.
Yeah, it's fine.
Any other questions?
Mm-mm.
Okay. And a motion to approve the Arts and Crafts Street Fair on Wednesday, July 13th?
With the alternate location.
With the, their requested location.
Correct.
Is that a motion? I'll make the motion.
Second.
And I assume that would include with the requisite closing of the street?
I think there's no question.
As the plan is presented.
But we actually now, this year, finally have the authority that we actually can close the street for things like this, and we did not have, actually, until the attorney general come back and say we can. Ms. Harper?
And subject to review by public safety personnel.
Right, yes. Final news. Motion, second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. And we'll have a signature for that one. I think we'll come back, because I don't think we have that within our packet. All right, new recommended. We have the Walk Run With History from the Falmouth Historical Society. This is a new event on May 22nd. Do we have anyone from the Historical Society wants to describe what we're proposing to do? Sounds like a great idea, but I'd love to hear your description.
Yes, we are proposing to have a 5K walk run. It will start at the Museums on the Green, go by the Catherine Lee Bates House, a little bit on Locust, down Mill Street to Surf Drive, back up shore, across, and then back on Catherine Lee Bates. And at the moment, we've identified seven historical characters that we will have placed along the route in costume, plus the map that we'll be handing out to runners is going to include information about the historical locations that they will be passing by, particularly if they're walking, so we'll have plenty of information with that. We have a meeting Wednesday with a group that we hope will handle all of the, the timing and operations of the race. We are working on the parking plan. We plan to have a parking plan that involves the Lawrence School and the Mullin Hall School. We're aware of that. And we were waiting to get our final details before approaching the churches in the area to make sure that this will not interfere with their services on that day.
And the one thing, coming back from our committee, is the recommendation, I think in your request was to have the race start at 10:00, and the committee was recommending that that's going to be a tougher time than if we could start earlier in the morning.
Yes, we're shifting to 8:00 to 11:00 as the time.
Of the actual event?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Patterson?
I just have a question on how you can protect the church parking lots from the runners and participants actually filling those spaces. Are the churches going to monitor their own parking lots to make sure that their parishioners have access?
We're going to discuss that with them, because actually, on Sunday, we normally have more of a problem with keeping them out of our parking lot. So, we've always been very cooperative with the church on the parking, and whatever that they, they think that they'll need for that, we'll be able to handle it, probably with volunteers.
The potential of actually starting to run at Lawrence School will get more people to park at Lawrence School than if you started?
That's an excellent point. One of the things we were going to discuss this coming Wednesday is the exact route. One of the members of our committee, Rita Pachico, had run the route and said, yes, this is 5K, but we haven't actually made sure that we have the exact dimension yet. This is our first time doing this.
And of course, you'll have to be discussing with the police detail sergeants, because there may be some street crossings and things like that that you'll have to be aware of.
Yes.
Any other questions on the historical one?
Thank you. Motion to approve, is that fair?
For May 22nd, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, the ayes have it.
I love the name, Walk Run With History.
It's great.
And I'm sure if you need anyone to dress up as a character, you can check with one of us, we might be able to do that. All right, I'll go through the wedding ceremony that have been applied for. If you want to hold any of them, please let me know. We have the Quinn Wedding Ceremony at Surf Drive Beach on June 4th, the Stalter on Old Silver Beach on July 16th, the Connolly, Falmouth Heights Beach on Saturday, July 23rd, the Viscaglia Ceremony on Monat, Saturday, August 13th, Milkovich, Monat Beach on Saturday, August 27th, and the Betzig Surf Drive Beach on September 10th.
Well, I'd like to start with this daughter.
Okay.
Request. That's on Saturday, July 16th, which is right in the middle of the summer, and it's from, they want to start setting up at 4:00, but they also have 120 vehicles.
Guests.
Yes.
Sixty.
Well, 100, I mean, yeah, 60 vehicles, but even, that's a lot of vehicles to, when, when the beaches are still open, and that's mid-July. It's on a weekend in July, it's the, it's the, there's another one in here that's the week after, the week after Labor Day. And those are times that the beaches, if the weather is good, the beaches are really used a lot. And I'm just wondering, I was hoping that Don Hopper might be here to help us out with this.
It's a similar request on August 13th, 165 people, 75-plus cars.
Right, so we have a few here that I think we should maybe approve the ones that seem reasonable, and then come back and discuss the ones that have a significant number of people and vehicles and time of day.
I agree.
I think we, we've act from the special events working group have been providing a series of conditions at the very.
And we should, and I think we should review the conditions to see whether or not they're consistent with what some of the issues might be.
They're all delineated here pretty nicely, so I, I like the work of the, of this working group, and I, I think we should heed their recommendations, because I think they are the people that know where the conflicts are going to arise. I know Don Hopper sits on that working group. Heather, am I not, am I correct? And so, I think these are the limits that they're putting on there that are going to help control.
I have to find that list here.
It's, it's at the very beginning of all of our applications, just to give you some sense. Yeah, of all of them.
I talked to Don after this meeting, and he did say that he made some suggestions and moved things around to make sure that he, they would work in a way that he thought was manageable. Rebecca?
I was at that meeting, and I was really quite surprised that anyone was considering our beaches on a weekend in July and August. And I voiced that at the meeting. And it seemed as if the discussion between the members of the special events and with Don Hopper and, and the beach committee, that they, they came to an agreement that they could work this. And it really was Don speaking himself and saying that this could work, but then the next part was, send it to the selectmen and see what they think. So, I think you've reacted just as I reacted when you say it's a Saturday and.
Well, I did read all the recommendations, and, and I did read the, the ones from the committee. So, I thought maybe because this, because of the timing, because of the date, that it's a Saturday in the middle of the summer, and it's late afternoon, we should probably look at the recommendations and see whether or not we really think that they're acceptable in terms of controlling the, the public access to the beach. So, for instance, on the Stalter one, no, no access, no access to restrooms, no preferred parking, first come, first served, no, and then, they recommend no access to parking, again, parking first come, first served, and alternate transportation to the site required, either by trolley or by bus. So, I guess my question too is, I don't suppose that any of these recommendations have been talked about with the applicant. Is that fair to say?
Well, it's on there, you know.
No.
Yeah, but that's standard. No, but I mean, in the back, where they've made their recommendations in the application.
But the actual permit that we're signing off has the five conditions. Public parking is a first come, first served basis. They must use group transportation. They have to contact Don and Bruce.
They should standardize themselves.
No, they're not.
No, I'm looking at page one. You're looking at this one?
No, I'm looking at page one.
Wait, I think you're on two different applications.
For Stalter.
This is both Stalter.
Okay.
Just to, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Harper?
The applicant has not been advised of these. These are the, the conditions under which the working group felt that they could recommend this to the board, understanding, and I want to underscore, that there was a, a long discussion about the, the very many beach weddings that are requested, and the size that, of the requests that are coming in at very sensitive times, you know, busy times for the, for the beaches. So, we did the best we could to recommend conditions under which they could be considered by the board, but by no means do we wish to take that away from you in terms of denial if you choose.
A question from Ms. Harper.
Yep.
So, the condition, for example, parking is on a first come, first served basis to allow public access while the, the wedding is also going to happen. How is that going to be enforced?
It's open public parking.
They can't reserve parking.
They can't reserve parking.
So, you couldn't bring a car in at 10:00 AM for the wedding?
You could. You couldn't put up, you know, barriers to prevent someone else from parking. You can come and park whenever, at 10:00 and pay the, either have your sticker or pay, but.
But I'm saying for, if, you know, if 60 cars for the wedding, bring their cars that sit at 10:00 AM, doesn't that effectively prevent public access? So, it seems that the condition itself doesn't quite take care of what Ms. Flynn is concerned about.
They wouldn't be getting in there until 4:00, after which part, I mean.
Unless they want to be sure they have a place to park.
And then they'd have to have a, a permit, just like everybody else. They wouldn't be allowed in as a wedding participant at 10:00. They could drive in because they have a permit, either on their car or that they have a pass that they purchased, which they could do anyway.
Right.
We couldn't prevent them from doing that if they have 60 cars that do that.
I think that scenario is somewhat unrealistic, and people are going to be coming dressed, and they're not going to want to walk to the location. They're going to want to drive to it. And I think, you know, that the conditions that are being specified are an attempt to really make this a workable arrangement, so. I don't want to create a scenario that's not likely.
But I think what we could do in our, as we review our policy, is we could say that the largest event we're going to be willing to have is a 100-person event with maximum 40 cars. And we set that from the very beginning, and so when applicant comes and says, I want to have this many, say, well, that doesn't fit within our policy, as opposed to someone who has already said they've already invited 120 people, and we said, well, you can have 100. And they're now in a position of, granted, they should not say have sent out their notices until they've been approved, but.
That makes sense, for peak summer.
I agree. I suspect that working group would love that policy.
They would appreciate it.
Yeah.
You're right.
Well, that's, will be part of the policy that I hope to have drafted for us for our next meeting, and then we come back to it.
That'd be good.
Would you still like to hold on the Stalter? The two large ones, we have the Stalter of 120 people, and we have the Viscaglia at Monat Beach of 165 people. The Milkovich one is 130 people, and they're suggesting they're going to be having two buses. Of course, it is at Monat Beach, and getting two buses into that parking lot, it's not easy either.
Now, see, the other thing, I think that, you have to understand that if they're using this, there are already people there, and you can't guarantee there will even, there will even be parking places for people. You can't guarantee tent spaces, and they might come with 40 cars and have no place to park, and then come with 120 people and no room on the beach. I mean, if it's really hot and humid, the beach is going to be pretty well occupied. I mean, if you're kind of, you know, shooting the dice, when you want to have a wedding, and you go to all this planning and, and expense, and then find out that they get there and they can't be accommodated.
Or it's raining. Or it's raining.
Well, yeah, but that could happen to anybody. I'm just thinking of, you have people there, and then, I was just concerned about approving something that may or may not work out for them. I'm just, I'm not thinking about us, I'm thinking about them trying to have a wedding, and all of a sudden, the circumstances are just going in the wrong direction. So, and there are only a couple in here like that.
Ms. Harper?
I, I think the other is, as you're looking at their applications, that they're from different states. I mean, this isn't just an area that is coming from the state of Massachusetts, or Connecticut, or New York. They're, I mean, they're, they're coming a distance for this. So, I think the first surprise is the number of people, the number of cars. It's a Saturday. It's our very serious time for people at our beaches, and, I mean, I think a decision has to be made whether there's a limit on the number, but I don't know how you do that this evening.
Well, I think maybe what we need to do is respond to them and explain to them the circumstances. Maybe simply say, we're approving your request, but you need to understand that this is the busiest time of the year, that the capacity of this beach is whatever it is, there's only so many parking places, and, and they wanted, some wanted to use the, some of the facilities, or they want to use a beach chair. You can't reserve a beach chair, so they may get there, and if somebody needs one and it's not there, that we can't guarantee any of their requests in terms of space, whether it's space on the beach, or whether it's space in the parking lot. And if they have a wedding of this size, they should take serious consideration to it, which could be a very crowded.
Event.
Event.
I'll check, and I thought that was already in our language in the form that they look at about even asking to do.
It is? Oh, wow. So, it's like, it's a roll of the dice then, for them. They, they either.
At your own risk, no guarantees.
At your own risk.
Heather?
I mean, at Monat Beach, to have 165 people show up at the same time on that beach, if it's being 4:30 on a sunny, sunny afternoon, it's a busy place.
Well, I would assume that it's, the people have been there before, and that's why they've chosen it, so they must know what it's like.
One of them is having their reception across the road and wants to have the ceremony there, and so some of it is just logistics based on where they have their receptions planned.
If we're comfortable with the limit on the number of guests in two weeks, are we comfortable with that number tonight, and say we're not going to approve something that's more than 100 people?
I, I don't think we can do that, because people, you know, make their wedding plans based upon their relatives and people they, they want to share the event with. But I am persuaded that the special events committee's suggestions will take care of this group of applicants, and also, I'm persuaded by the fact that the board is going to address these types of situations in the very near future. So, I think we're, you know, the best we can do at this point is to move toward a, a more mutually beneficial situation for all the. mutually beneficial situation for all these events going forward in the peak summer months for parking and for public access.
I guess the only reason why I wouldn't mind putting up a number even tonight is, we're not saying they can't get married. We're just saying they can't use the town beach for that large, and there are lots of other places they could do it. But if you're okay with sticking with it now and then in the future, we have that policy. I'm okay with that too.
I agree with Mr. Jones.
Yeah.
I think it's January. I know they've put the request in and the planning, but I think the numbers are out of control.
It could be disappointing.
On these dates. On these dates. If this was, maybe if they wanted to do this in April or October, shorter months, but to have that on the weekends and two of them in August, two of them in July, I think it's, I think it's too many people and it's congestion.
The truth of matters, if we take that 120, call it 100, they'll show up with 120 because we will not be there saying, no, we're counting how many is it?
You're saying 120 goes to 140, then?
I think to do two of these probably does not make sense, but I think for us to come up with a little bit stricter policy that restricts the numbers so when someone comes in, they know ahead of time, I'm not even going to bother asking because I know my wedding is too big for that. I think that would really be more appropriate, I think, as you were suggesting.
Also, they're going to see the conditions on the permit and be able to decide if they can live with them.
Yeah. I mean, some have asked for wheelchairs and they can't be guaranteed. Some want to use restrooms and that's not, is that not allowed? Or is that one of the things they can't do?
If they're closed, they're closed.
Oh, that's right. They close them. Depending on the time, it could be, it could be closed. So, and that, that's the case.
So move approval?
Second?
This is all Quinn, Stalter, Conley, all of them?
Down to B, G, Betsy.
B through G. Right, motion to approve. And second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close. And then the ayes have. Yep, Mr. Penner?
Please.
First off, my comment is, if you want to restrict, I would think that you would restrict the amount of vehicles and ask them to use trolleys and that kind of transportation and that way you're not going to ruin someone's wedding and/or business of motels and restaurants and whatever by making them go somewhere else. And secondly, I mean, this was designed to eliminate this kind of deliberation that we just had, which doesn't bother me, but it also made me think, when you had it the old way, we used to be able to see who was accepted and who was denied. I'm just wondering, is it written anywhere, what events and such that you have denied, if someone curious, such as myself, might want to know?
If they were not recommended, they would be on our agenda as being not recommended.
No, but I mean, they don't make it to the agenda. They make it to the group first, so it's kind of not completely transparent.
If they were not recommended by the group, it would be on our agenda as being not recommended.
Not recommended.
Oh, excuse me. Thanks.
Yep, Mr. Fox?
Hi, Jim Fox, 141 Locust Street. I just wanted to point out an experience that I've had a couple of times at the beach. I frequent the beach early in the morning and very often right at 4:00 in the afternoon almost every day. And I was asked to get up and leave this year because of a wedding coming down. And I really didn't like it, so I want to just give you that kind of feedback, that these people come in, you give them permission, they think they own it, and they asked us to get up and leave because we were in their way. That's, I don't know what wedding it was, but it did happen. Just relay that to you.
Another thing we might do is just say that there'll be no weddings before 5:00 or something like that, if you want a wedding, because they set up at 3:00 and 3:30 and they want to have people evacuate the area where there's, not that all of them have chairs, but sometimes they do. So I don't know. It's just something to think about.
I mean, I think also your point of reminding them, it is a public beach.
Yeah.
It's first and foremost a public beach. They have no business asking someone to move. They need to be aware, if they're having their wedding on a public beach, they may have extra guests. And they should welcome them as opposed to ask them to move. They ask to have it to the public. There are lots of private places they could have it. If they want a private ceremony, then they can have it private if they want it in the public.
We'll give them public.
That's what it is.
Bring extra men.
Bring another case of the...
All right. Next item. We have a report from the school committee on something I'm trying to get, some having our committees come to us and tell us what's going on. And this time we have very exciting news and a very happy welcome that we'd like to make. Mr. Jacobs?
Thank you. Alan Jacobs, Chair of the Falmouth School Committee. With me is Nancy Taylor, the interim superintendent. So I thought that what I would do, what I've discovered is that a lot of people just don't even know what the school committee does.
Interim?
Yes.
Until...
I'll explain.
Okay.
A lot of people were like...
All right. Be patient.
I'll let you continue. I'm sorry to interrupt.
So a lot of people, I've found, don't really understand what the school committee does. So I thought that what I would do would be to kind of tell you what the school committee does and give you some examples, and that can kind of be the report that I have. So the school committee does three things. The school committee sets policy for the schools. The school committee approves the budget that goes to town meeting, and the school committee hires the superintendent. So let me work backwards. As you know, last, two Tuesdays ago, the school committee unanimously voted Nancy Taylor to appoint Nancy Taylor as superintendent of the schools, subject to contract negotiation. So as we haven't yet signed a contract, she is still technically the interim superintendent. However, we couldn't be happier with our choice. And as I've gone around town and bumped into people in stores, read social media, it seems like we've got pretty much of a 100% approval rating on that. The only criticism I think we've got is people said, what took you so long? But, but we did take our time. And, you know, we made a promise to the town back in the springtime that we would conduct a thorough and open search, which we did. We had tremendous involvement on the community. We posted the job description on the website and got feedback from people. We had two days of public hearings. We had an online survey, which something in the order of 130 people participated in. We had a screening committee. Becky was kind enough to be representative of the community on the screening committee. What it all turned out to be was that unanimously, as I said, we voted Nancy to be superintendent of schools. We're hoping that that interim goes away very shortly. So that's the first piece. The second piece is that, as I said, we approved the school budget as it goes to town meeting. I can tell you that we've gotten tremendous support from the finance committee and even more than support, we've got great understanding. Sue Smith, Deb McGuire, Chuck Eastman have really taken time to really dig into and understand the functioning of the schools. At the moment, and Joe, I mean, Chen Petit has been working very hard with Patrick Murphy, the finance director of the schools. At the moment, we're less than a half a percent apart in terms of the number that we were given from the town and what we're looking at. I have no doubt that when town meeting convenes, the finance committee and the school committee's number will be the same. So we feel very, very good about that. The last piece that we do is policy. It's not really policy, but one of the things that we've been working on, as you know, under your direction, is citing of the new senior center. We're very, very, very excited about the possibilities of having the senior center located as close as it's being cited to the high school and working with them. We've got a great working relationship with Jim Viera and Jill Irving Bishop. Right now, we're working on the citing of the replacement field. Two weeks ago, we had a meeting with Heather and Julian, town engineers and so forth. And I couldn't be happier with the way they have embraced the spirit of what we've been talking about, that that field does need to be replaced and we need to be whole with it. Julian and Heather asked some really digging questions to the engineers to ensure that we would get what we needed and so forth. So we greatly appreciate your taking that time and doing that. I was here at the beginning of the meeting, Mr. Chairman, when you talked about the potential for the needle exchange program across the street. I had actually reached out to the executive director of the eighth support group and asked him some questions and so forth. He told me he'd be meeting with Mr. Suso, I think, sometime in the very near future. Will be very interested to hear what you have to say on, or what he has to say to you on that. Most of the other things that we're working on in terms of policy have to do with student wellness. We have two members of the school committee or on the wellness committee. We're working very closely with the Board of Health in terms of issues having to do with recess and activity of the students, mostly elementary and middle school students. In fact, some of Nancy's recommendations in terms of budget, even though they don't appear to be directly at recess time and activity time, it gives the schools the opportunity to be able to build in more recess. So we're very excited about that. We have a task force that is looking at school start times. We expect to be able to have some recommendations on that probably in the March timeframe. As you probably read, there's just reams of studies that have been done that talk about the need, desirability of moving, especially high school start times later than we have them now, just because of the biorhythms of students and so forth. So we're looking at that kind of stuff. Nancy, I think we'll talk more about the work that is being done out of her office and out of the schools, working with the police and so forth with the opiate task force. Probably the last thing that I'll talk about in terms of policy, and I'm sure that you've seen this in the paper, has to do with some questions that have been raised to the school committee and the administration having to do with academic suspensions or athletic suspensions, not academic suspensions, as a result of student participation in parties around town in which there were alcohol and marijuana present. We talked with the principal last week. We're getting tremendous support from the police department with respect to this. There is a set of rules. We are a member of the MIAA and they have specific rules with respect to this. As a MIAA school, we don't have any leeway in terms of that. But Mary Gans, the principal of the high school, is putting together a task force to look at the issue. One of the things that is concerning to us right now is that the police force's hands are a little bit tied. We have a memorandum of understanding in terms of how we work with them, but because of this publicity, it's been, a decision on that or an opinion on that has been referred to town council. We're waiting on that. All of that, it's an important issue, the athletic suspensions, but it's not the issue. The issue is really the use and the abuse of alcohol in this town by teenagers. And that's got Nancy and myself and the rest of the school committee just really freaked out. And it's not a school problem, it's a town problem and so forth. So we look to any assistant that you can give us in terms of this because it's something that is of vital concern. So that's kind of my general overview. I'm going to turn it over to Nancy. I think she's going to go into some more specifics about this. And again, thank you for your opportunity.
Yes.
And congratulations, Nancy, and thank you. We're thrilled that not only are you someone who worked up through the Falmouth school system, but actually was educated through the Falmouth school system, and to have someone going through our school system and then leading it, I think is a huge testament to the wisdom of the school committee, but also to what you can do with the Falmouth education. So congratulations.
Thank you so much. And thank you for the opportunity to address you this evening. Mr. Jacobs took a lot of my concepts that I was going to talk about tonight, but mine may be coming from a little bit of a different lens. So when I think about my first six months as the interim superintendent here in Falmouth, I think about the school and the outreach to the Falmouth community and the high level of responsiveness that we have received as a district. That has really impacted in a very, very positive way my first six months here. And I always think about anything that I do in terms of relationships or reaching out to the town, how it overall, in an overall way, impacts students. Because that's really, as a district leader, that's what I need to be all about. So for example, when I think about building the district's budget, it really does necessitate an understanding of Falmouth's global budget and how we, as a district, fit into that budget picture or puzzle. And so the town has been extremely responsive in helping me build that budget. And I have met with Jen Petit, the Director of Finance, and certainly the finance committee over and over and over again, to work really closely together to build a budget that is grounded in the bigger picture in Falmouth, but also for me to always be balancing that, being within the larger Falmouth budget with really meeting the academic and social emotional needs of all of our students. And meeting those needs impacts the budget and helps me build a budget. So that focus, that balance is a challenge, and it is my position to make sure that I meet that balance and make sure that the budget appropriately reflects the needs and priorities as the district has developed them. And also, it can't ever happen, from my perspective, in isolation. So I just really want to thank the town for helping me do that and working with us through that process. And I do believe that we will be able to come to a number that everyone can agree upon. The other piece in terms of outreach and work with municipal departments in the town, which has been really, really important to me, and you've, and again, Mr. Jacobs mentioned it, is certainly our work with the Falmouth Police Department, and it has several different layers. We, the Chief Dunn called me and said, you know, we want to talk about reaching out to younger students, Morse Pond students. We have a resource officer and the seven through 12 students are used to seeing police more in the buildings and it's just kind of natural now, it's not a big deal. But we wanted to reach back to Morse Pond. And so I met with Chief Dunn and he presented a junior citizens academy for Morse Pond school students, where police officers go over for an after-school program, they do some work with kids in terms of homework and some study, but then they have field trips to the police department and it builds a relationship between our officers in town and some of our younger learners. So that's been a very, very positive piece. You heard a little bit about our concern, our collective concern with the police department around underage drinking in this town. And it is, it is a concern. And you, I think you've heard Chief Dunn's mantra that it's a community issue, whether it's substance abuse, whether it's underage drinking, that issue belongs to all of us. And our primary concern, again, I'm just repeating what Mr. Jacobs had said, is not necessarily the MIAA policy or the suspension piece from 25% of your games. The issue is the health and safety of students and kids in this town. And that's really where we're coming from. The police department supported some of our needy families around the holidays. I think you saw it in the paper with Shop with the Cop, and that's a very big deal. And I get a phone call from Chief Dunn saying, you know, help me with some families that need assistance, and it's a very big deal for families. They were extremely appreciative. We've met repeatedly and again, it came into play two Fridays ago, with really working on the development and implementation of our safety plans and how does the school respond in conjunction with the police department and first responders when there is an issue in one of our buildings. We have 15 Falmouth Public Schools staff members who have taken part in the Falmouth Opiate Coalition. And that's, again, another collaborative effort so that we can be looking at how, on our end, are we educating students around substance abuse issues and how are we helping students make healthy choices and build resiliency for kids? So those are just a couple of examples, again, of how we've tried to partner with the Falmouth Police Department, always in the best interest of students. We have a relationship with the fire department. Again, we have a program coming in the spring that the Falmouth Fire Department is creating to come in and start working with seniors about safety when they go off to college. And what does that mean in terms of keeping safe? So just another piece. I have a whole lot of respect for our Department of Public Works and speaking with Mike Souza about the condition of the roads in town to make sure the transportation is really safe for our buses. Mr. Jacobs mentioned the Falmouth Senior Center. Once again, really working collaboratively and in partnership to make sure that we support the seniors and we certainly support them being on the property of Falmouth High School and... and we're very excited about that program. We work with Brenda Swain at the Falmouth Service Center. We have fresh markets at the East Falmouth Elementary School and the T-Ticket Elementary School. Of course, we want more, but right now, that's the best we can do for healthy nutrition programs for students. And I met with the Service Center a week ago to talk about how can we continue to meet some of the nutritional needs for students over the summertime, because that is a concern. And so, we're working towards coming up with a plan for that. We have Falmouth Human Services. I work closely with Susie Hartman and Karen Cudera. They are very helpful in bringing some services into the schools to provide parents with resources, so that parents who don't know where they can reach out for help, that's been a very effective program in the elementary schools. So, just in closing, I really feel that Falmouth is a community that supports its schools and invests in all of our students. And I believe the support through community relationships and the commitment of resources is critical to maintaining academic excellence and Level One schools in this town. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions for interim superintendent soon to be permanent? Mr. Patterson?
I think another overlooked, slightly overlooked asset after the schools is our VIPS program, which is just astounding. It hasn't been replicated anywhere in the United States at the level that we see happening here in this town. And I just, I had a meeting just last week as an advisor for their mentoring program on how they can expand it and kind of the things they have to worry about, and matching mentors with students, some of the successes that they've had with it. And so, that group looks for many different ways that they can actually support the education of students, and we get a huge number of volunteer hours every year. I just want to mention that, it wasn't mentioned now, but they are a significant contributor, I believe, to our school program.
And it's not a slight at all to the volunteers in public schools. They're in our high schools, so I sort of feel like they're ours. I want to own them, so not at all.
Ms. Patterson?
Do you mind if I tell a personal story about our new superintendent?
Not at all.
Does she mind?
Do I get a vote?
She's heard me, excuse me?
One.
This one? I think you heard me tell this at one point, and I really liked telling the story, and it is about you. So, I was chairman of the school committee, and there was a discussion among the school committee to talk about the innovation schools. And it was a major discussion in the state of Massachusetts, and there was discussion in the superintendent, Mark Dupree's office, and we had this idea that the school that could be the innovation school would be the Lawrence School. So, Nancy Taylor was called to the superintendent's office, and that has an implication when you don't know why you're going there. So, I'm sitting at a table with the superintendent and a few other people, and I will tell you, she walked in the door and she looked like an ice cube. I can see her face, she was stern, she was serious, and she didn't know what was coming. She didn't have an idea that we were going to talk about the innovation school, and she just sat down and kind of stared at us. And then, we gave her this idea and this plan, that she would start from absolute zero in the Lawrence School and bring that as an innovation school, and she moved the level of the learning in that school to become a number-one school in the state of Massachusetts. And she did it in short time, it was effective, it was efficient, and it was a junior high school. And I have never forgotten the thought of, she wasn't sure what we were going to say to her, but your work ethic and immediately and did it absolutely correct. And I love to tell that story of how you just started from ice cold and ended up red hot. Thank you.
Thank you, and that was quite a story. And I was called into the superintendent's office, keeping in mind that I had just been appointed as an interim principal and was told that I needed to move the school and that I would be given the resources to do so. So, yes, I was, I walked out thinking, oh, my gosh, what did I just get myself into? And it worked.
It certainly did.
Well, it's interesting you brought that up, because we just, several of us just attended the Massachusetts Municipal Association Annual Meeting Friday and Saturday, this last Friday. And I try to remember the speaker, but they pointed out that Massachusetts, if it were considered a country, actually ranks sixth in the world in terms of academic achievement of the students overall, every other country in the world. Well, if you take that as a position for Massachusetts as a state, and then you put our high school and our Lawrence School at Level One within that state, I mean, that really tells you something about the caliber of achievement of our students in this town. And it's through the tremendous educators like Nancy, leading a team of teachers to the level of achievement that our students are reaching, not the teachers reaching, but our students reaching. It's pretty impressive. So, thank you for everything you do for our students.
Thank you.
Thank you, and good luck.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is Water and Wastewater Monthly Report. Mr. Jack, DPW Director.
I am. I think we all are.
Yeah, nothing's been turned on. Did you hit the projector too?
Projector, uh...
This was slow this afternoon, startup.
Did you hit the projector?
Yeah, I don't think the projector's on either.
Oh, it's coming. Yep.
I guess we're all...
Very slow startup this afternoon.
Top right.
Yep.
Yep, that'll work too.
We did not have the report in December, which would have been for November. This is January, so we're doing December, and this is going to be a little bit longer than a typical presentation, because it was over a period of two months. But we'll start out with the financials on the project. Original contract was for $40.9 million. We adjusted it down by about $900,000 and then back up about $85,000 with two approved change orders thus far. So, we still are down about $800,000 on a credit. We're about 32% complete as of the end of November, so that puts us up around 36% now. And so far, we paid out almost $12.6 million on the project. Expected to be completed in May of next year, so since we're at the end of January, we're approaching the halfway point in a couple more months, and the project's going very, very well. Potential change orders here, $400,000, really equals the sum of two values. One is for three work change directors that we're looking at now, dealing with the SCADA system or Supervisory Control and Data Acquisition System. That is the brain of the water system, not just the plant, but the entire water system is controlled through the SCADA system. Telephone upgrades and the bulk of that, about $350,000, is for remediation of the former firing ranges, which were in the Long Pond watershed. So, we have two firing ranges there, a short range and a long range. They went out of use around the 1980s. We've done a site investigation report. There is lead in the soils, but the lead in the water samples were very good. So, we didn't have a problem with groundwater contamination, but we do need to remediate the site. So, right now, our present options would be, under the State Bureau of Waysite Cleanup, would be to go through a six-year program of remediation, which means that we would have a significant amount of engineering and additional study and reporting to do with the state, not to mention the actual cleanup costs that we would incur. Or we could do it within one year. So, we completed the study last year, filed all the appropriate paperwork with the state, got an RTN number, routing number, and so now, by this summer, if we can effect that cleanup, then we will be all done in one shot. So, there's no question that it is the most cost-effective way and time in order to do that. And of course, I don't think that anybody would be wanting to be taking a look at Flint, given that we have these firing ranges and Flint had its problems. So, that's what that change order is there. For cash flow, we started out at $40.9 million, down to $40.099. So, you have the line that has all the dots on it is the projected value. Then, the adjusted value is the dark blue line that goes straight up, and of course, you see they're relatively close together. The red triangles at the bottom are the actual payments that have been made to date, and they're pretty much following the curve. So, the project is in balance, on time, and within budget. Concrete pours, just about every month, we're pushing about anywhere from 650 to 800 yards of concrete, so all of the exterior walls have been done, on the basement areas, the DAF or dissolved air flotation walls and tanks are done. Chemical area slab was done, the elevated pump gallery slab, and you're going to be seeing a couple of different pictures on the elevated pump gallery, because that's actually very interesting. And once a portion of it gets buried, you're never going to see it again. And of course, the ozone foundation, which is down on the right-hand corner, the picture up on the upper right-hand corner there is the foundation getting ready to put the rebar in for the walls on the garage area, which is on the western side of the plant. There'll be seven, seven, seven actual vehicle bays and an additional service bay in that facility there. The two 24-inch raw water intakes have been installed. I do have a couple pictures to show you of those a little bit later. The upper right picture there is the 24-inch high-density polyethylene pipe being lifted and floated out into the pond, and then we had a directional drill, which is not in the bottom picture, that was just driving the sheeting. But a directional drill was sitting down in that area where they drilled out into the pond and then pulled that pipe back, and they had to do that twice, because there were two separate intakes. And across the board on a water treatment plant like this, you're going to see just about two or more of everything. That's built-in redundancy, because if you have one component fail, then the system's not out of water because of the critical nature of it. So, you're going to see that quite often. The raw water pump station wet well, that's what you're seeing in the bottom picture there. The sheeting's been driven in. There are well points installed in order to de-water it, to get the wet well in, and then on the top of that, in that vicinity, is where the raw water pump station is actually going to be constructed. Electrical room conduits, and I have a picture to show you that, and we'll be getting ready for the structural steel. So, that means that the first or basement floor is essentially complete. It has elevated slabs, concrete slabs on it, which form the ceiling for the basement and the floors for the second floor, and then the walls will go up vertically, and the structural steel is for the second floor. So, this is where we were in June, with a hole in the ground, October, and here you can see, this was looking from the west to the northeast, and on the left-hand side of the picture over where the cranes are, that was the exterior wall starting to go up, and where you see all of the rotting and everything in the middle of the picture, that was for the dissolved air flotation tanks and the filters. Then, in November, this is what we saw at town meeting, the exterior walls were making good progress, approximately 50% complete. In the back, you can see the filters, the four filters for it. And here we are now, late September, so, or late December. So, you can see that during the months of November and December, they made significant progress. So, all of this is actually going to be below ground and forms the basement level of the facility, so that way it won't be too obtrusive out in the woods when it's completed, as opposed to being a big block. These are the conduits that I was talking about. You see the conduits running under what is about to be a slab, and then that's reinforcing steel that these gentlemen are walking on, and then concrete will be poured on that, and that'll form the floor of the second floor. This is just some more of the pump conduits. This is a shot from the interior basement, showing you the ceiling slash floor of the first floor. Some of the supports that you see on the left-hand side is going to be for pouring slabs. Those are temporary supports that are installed, and I have some more shots of those. Back in November, this is where we were, looking west from the southeast corner of the facility, and where you see the truck on the bottom down there and the blue tarps, that whole area down there is going to be buried below ground, but there will be tanks that are going to be built, and I'll explain those in another slide here, but this is to give you an example of the progress. So, here, all we had was the northern exterior wall that was done at that time in November, and then a little bit along the back, which you couldn't see. And then, here we are in December, all of the exterior walls have been completed, and now some of the columns are starting to go up, that are going to support the second floor, and they're sitting on the pump chamber area. This is where we are now, pretty much the same shot, and these columns here, I have another picture, but you can see the concrete support columns have already been installed, and they had the framing taken off, and then these here, little small columns here, are just supports for the elevated slab. This is just another picture of the temporary supports that are installed, and these are the permanent concrete columns over here. Now, this picture on the lower left is standing down where there are going to be two rather large tanks. You can take this profile, basically split it in half here, and I know this looks like the side view of a motel at the present time, but these aren't actually rooms, these are chambers, hence the term pump chamber area. So, from here over to the right is really going to be the clear well, and in front of all of those chambers coming out is going to be an 800,000-gallon storage tank for the finished water. It's actually going to be two separate tanks in one, once again, for redundancy. Then, over on the left side here are going to be two 200,000-gallon tanks. One's going to be for washwater, for cleaning the filters, and the other one for the spent washwater after the filters are cleaned. And then, the pumps will be up top here. There are going to be, on the right-hand side there, there's going to be three 2,900-gallon per minute pumps, so each one of the pumps is capable of pushing out over 4 million gallons a day by themselves. And then, on the left-hand side, there's going to be two washwater pumps and two backwash pumps. This area is behind the building, the area that we were just talking about, where the tanks are going to go is back here. This is the pump chamber area. So, this is the north side, north or south face of the building, I'm sorry, and this is the ozone tank area. So, this is where they're going to have the contactors, there'll be two separate ozone contactors installed, and the ozone pumping or the ozone generating room is going to be part of that as well. So, here, the foundations are done, and they're getting ready to put up the walls. This is just another shot of some of the elevated slab supports that are down in the basement, getting ready to put in the floor up top, then they all come out. The intake screens, these are already installed, but on the upper right over here, we have the anchor assembly, and these were preassembled, so it's stainless steel elbows that'll be placed on the bottom of the pond, and then on the left, down at the bottom here, this is an intake screen. This is the piece here that'll actually connect. This is a screen over here, and this is also a screen over here, so this one's covered up at the present time. In addition to the 24-inch intakes that were installed, for each of the intakes was a 3-inch airburst line, which gives us the ability to shoot air out there to clear off the intake screens if they ever got clogged. This is just another couple of shots of the pump chamber area, and now this here would be, oops, this one on the left here is looking from the west to the east, and you can see that most of the ceiling and/or elevated slapping is done in this area. The garage is going to be right in front of this wall here, and then you're going to start to see the building going up vertically. Over here, this just gives a little more perspective, this is the pump chamber area, and this is going to be the ozone building right here. And of course, that's what it's going to look like in the future, and as I've indicated before, the, this area here is where those buried tanks are going to be, and this is that pump chamber area here. So, were there any questions on Long Pond?
Thank you.
Could I go back just to SCADA? Now, we already have a SCADA system. I mean, we have, this is an upgrade to the SCADA, or?
Yes, it's a substantial. Yes, it's a substantial upgrade to the SCADA. And for no other reason, believe it or not, the plant itself is a very, very sophisticated plant. So it's being upgraded not only from a software perspective and a hardware perspective throughout the system, but for security as well.
So that whoever's on call, they have whatever equipment they need to know where the issues, where the problems are in more detail perhaps than they would have had with the previous system?
Yes. And this, this plant will report everything all of the time. You can literally run the entire water system from a laptop at home. But that's one of the reasons why security is paramount on a facility like this. So we've gone through great lengths on the security aspect of it, and cybersecurity is probably the biggest.
Yeah, I have one more question, just because I forgot. What is the percentage of people in town on town water?
The percentage of people on town water? It's, I would say it's better than ninety-five to ninety-seven percent, so probably now above ninety-seven percent.
And that has increased how much, say, in the last ten years or five years?
We had a significant, I'd say since nineteen ninety, nineteen nineties and early two thousands, though, we had significant mains installed in the northeast quadrant of town, where we took on large subdivision areas and significant areas that were on private wells at that time due to the base contamination. So back then, you were probably looking at eighty to eighty-five percent. So we've come a long way. There are very few on, on their own private well.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank you, working out in a combination with the contractors to allow us to have that recreational pass, passage through that area just above where the pump station is. I must ask on a weekend, forty people just making one lap around Long Pond. So that's in a relatively short period of time. And if I think about all those people trailing me on the, on the trail, a lot of us get a lot of cardiovascular exercise using that path, and I appreciate it. And I don't know whether the, the cross-country team actually got to use it before the end of their season or not, but I know they use it as their course. So thanks for making that a combination.
The contractor wasn't happy at first, believe me. They prefer to own the site, if you will, and just keep everybody out. But I can honestly say that the users of the system, as well as contractor and all their people, they've gone along very, very well, and it's working out very nice. So, and it'll really be nice when it's all done. So for the Little Pond, Little Pond Sewer Service Area Construction Project, original amount was twenty point four million dollars. The adjusted value went up slightly, twenty point seven two six million dollars. We're about thirty percent complete overall on the project, paid out six point two million. Started May twentieth, and we're going to be finishing up. And when I say finishing up, this is actually fairly far ahead, June and July. We expect most of the major work by far is going to be done pretty much by the end of the year. You know, a lot of the rest of that time there is going to be for a lot of the other smaller stuff. But as far as the major disruptions to the community, most of it's going to be done by the end of the year and, and early winter of next year. Potential change orders right now, we're looking at twenty thousand dollars, but that number will go up because they're in Maravista now, and they're going to have a significant number of conflicts for a number of different reasons with wetlands and mains and culverts and drainage systems and what have you. But for right now, there's just a nominal amount of change orders that are out there for some of the problems that they've already encountered. But the project's doing very well. And as you can see on here, the original budget is the blue line, the dark blue line on the bottom. It's a little hard to see with little blue triangles. The adjusted budget for the increases is the lighter blue line with the green dots on it. So you can see they're following each other very closely. And then, of course, the amount that we've actually paid out, six point two seven million. We're paying out a little bit more at the beginning of the project because they're really moving fast. They're doing well. Unfortunately, like with the water, with the water plant project, there's a lot of neat little pictures to see. For the sewer, it's a hole in the ground all over the place. So there's only so many holes that you can actually photograph that would keep your interest. So we don't have as many pictures on this one. But in the upper right up there is showing you what some of the directional drilling equipment looks like. This is the truck and the trailer with the fluids that they have on there for the mud and the directional drill. Here on the bottom, this is Main Street, where they were directional drilling a piece of the main up there. And right down here in the bottom corner, you can see what looks like a tube going into the mud there. That is the directional drill that is running under, running under the asphalt. So the hikes, for all intents and purposes, is complete. All of the mains are in, the gravity mains, the force mains, the laterals all the way up to the curb. And the Maravista force main was installed, and I gave you that on a previous report from Iroquois down to Sycamore. We're continuing the lift stations. We began on Alphonse Street, which is the one that is up on the school property. Then the vault and the foundation slab are completed for the mall lift station. We'll be doing the same on Alphonse and upgrading the Robbins Road lift station, which is right at the head of the harbor there. Completed the Route twenty-eight force main, and that's what this project was in this picture over here. This is the force main that comes down Springbars Road and then runs up Main Street towards Scranton, where it connects into a manhole. And a twelve-inch water main on Randolph. Randolph and Springbars has got a significant amount of work. I mean, I feel sorry for them out there. But unfortunately, with building lift stations, force mains, gravity mains, and these are the trunk sewers, so there are some of the deepest sewers that we have in the town are all going in there, and then a twelve-inch water main had to go in as well. But all of that is done. So for this month and going into next month, where we are, the crews are going to be predominantly out in Maravista, gravity, force main, and laterals. They've already started. For the gravity, they'll be starting Montauk. They were supposed to start it today, but I don't believe that they did. Then Chestnut and Priscilla on the north side for gravity mains, and then a low-pressure system, they had already started down around Sycamore, and they'll be moving north on these streets here. Springbars Road are going to be continuing the trunk sewer and the force main. The trunk sewer has to go out to Maravista, and they had a small piece of force main to put in, I still believe. The lift stations, I already covered that. When the vaults and slabs are complete on both, then the buildings themselves will actually go up, and then the components will go inside. So most of that's just going to be architectural work. And we awarded, or in the process of awarding, the low-pressure pump bid that we had for the Little Pond Sewer Service Area. So these are the proverbial grinder pumps. Bid came in at two point four eight five million. The next higher bid was two point nine two. So it was actually only the seven thousand dollar difference between the next higher bidder on a two-and-a-half-million-dollar bid. And the lowest bid was disqualified for a number of different reasons, and that was at one point eight one five, I think, million dollars. But they were all over the place on their bid. So there were a number of things that they weren't going to be doing. They completely rejected any ballasting for any of the pumps, and that was a major component that needed to happen. The warranty wasn't there, and there were a number of other things. So this one is going to E1, so these will be procured in Massachusetts. That's where the retailer is. And for the Main Street main, and this is similar to what they did on Maravista, except that this is a little bit larger. This is the force main going up Main Street. That's an eight-inch high-density polyethylene pipe, and they put it in in sections, and then they have to fuse the sections together. So this is a machine that they put on there with a generator. It generates heat on a steel plate between the two pieces of main. Then they retract the heating element and has a compressor, a compressor that hydraulically brings the pipe together and fuses it together. And this is just a couple of shots that I showed on the other one of the directional drilling going in. This was over at the mall lift station, and this is showing them putting in the force main. The force main is actually preassembled here. That's what's hanging up in the air. That's going to go into the lift station. This is showing you what the finished product is on the foundation and the base slab. This is at the mall on the upper left. So this will actually be the lift station. And on the lower right picture here, this was the wet well that was going in before the slab was completed. So they're making good progress on that, and that's going to be very similar to what the Alphonse lift station's going to be. So this was the last map that you had seen, and the red lines indicated where the mains had been installed. So here we have the Falmouth Heights area here. This was Main Street down here, and this was the force main that went in on Maravista from Iroquois down to Sycamore. And then here's where we are now. So all of the blue in this area represents that the service laterals are complete all the way up to the property line. The yellow lines represent the mains that have gone in. So we not only have the Falmouth Heights area done here, but this was the force main that I showed you on Main Street that went in. We had the Maravista force main here. You can see they're putting in the other low-pressure mains, starting at the southern end of the peninsula and working north. And then up here, I believe this was Cedar, was where they put in one of the first gravity mains, and they've got a couple more done. And then they'll be working up in this vicinity up here to put in the gravity main. So that's where most of the effort is now. That's it.
I'm not sure if this question is for you or for Julian, but what would be, is there an impact of all this utility improvement on the equalized valuation of the town at all? Does it impact that? I just, I don't know, it just occurred to me that when you think of the significant improvements to the community, I just wondered if it affects the equalized valuation.
I think there would be some impact, Pat, but maybe I could get back to you and members of the board as to a little better accounting of that. Happy to do so.
And with the grinder pumps, we're still waiting on that contract being finalized. And once it is, the board will then be looking into what kind of policy we're going to establish following the direction of uptown meeting. And we really cannot start that process at all until we actually have that contract so we know what you're talking about.
I have two other questions. One is on the timing of when people can connect their laterals. How far out in advance? We had someone who stopped by the office, I think, two days ago, who wanted to know, live out of town, want to know when they should try to be around here. How accurately can we project forward as to when we're going to be working on certain streets?
Well, for the Falmouth Heights area in its entirety, the mains are in. I'm pretty sure all testing right now is complete. They had a couple minor tests that they had to do last week, but I believe that those are done as well. So that whole geographic area would be able to be looking for connections and requests to install around April.
And then, but if it hasn't been done yet, how far in the future can they be looking forward to get projections as to when they should be able to, be able to predict? Two weeks in advance, four weeks in advance? What sort of accuracy can we do in predicting?
You mean for them to make their application?
Yeah.
Yeah. At that time, we're going to be pretty quick on the turnarounds, as, well, as quick as possible, I should say. So I would, I would think that a two- to three-week timeframe would be a good one. A two- to four-week timeframe would be a really good one.
And the last was, the Springbars Road is closed? I thought I noticed something in the, a posting as to how long it's going to be closed or what road closures we're going to have with that.
For Springbars, we always try to maintain access for the businesses there in one way, shape, or form. And sometimes that's actually even through the mall parking lot, because a lot of people use that as well. So we try to have no complete closure. And even now, with the mains that are going to be going in, they're going to be going toward the Maravista side. We got the other side done. So access for that will be through that area. A lot of the, and that's only talking about that portion of Springbars with respect to the mall entrance area where the businesses are. For Springbars, coming south, like down to Dillingham and everything, that was a different animal. We were able to close that because there are alternate routes, and that was for the force main to go in. But that's all done. And two other things that I might point out, too, is that a lot of gas mains went in. So I know it was a lot of disruption for people with sewer mains, water mains, gas mains, everything. But over fourteen thousand feet of gas mains, so almost three miles of gas main in the Falmouth Heights and Maravista area were done. So that's, that's actually significant because every single one of those mains had a history of leakage. All right? So it's a, it's a huge improvement from a safety and utility perspective, and it's much better for us, of course, because when we're done, we're going to be paving roads, and we don't want to be paving them and having to go in and dig up a leak. All right? So it was a, it was a good relationship being able to work with them and get it done.
You just said what I was going to ask about, or people talk about in that area, is the paving roads. And so you're saying that all of that will, will look as it did before all of this started. You'll pave those roads that you've cut down through the middle of the street.
Will restore a lot of the roads, and in many cases, they will be better. But not every road is intended to get full-width paving. There are a number of them that will, based on what their conditions are. But the project didn't entail full-width paving and/or milling and paving for every road in the project area. You had to double the cost of the project in order to accomplish, accomplish that. So for those, for those roads that had, let's say, a three-foot-wide trench, that'll be a trench restoration. And then if a road had a more significant disturbance, but the base is sufficient to be able to do an overlay, we'll do an overlay, and that'll be full-width. So for all intents and purposes, they'll have a new road. But then others, such as Maravista, that's a very long one. It's going to be a big trench on the upper portion doing the gravity main. So when that is done, that asphalt is over twelve inches thick on Maravista. So we're going to have to mill some of that off in order to replace it. But a lot of that's going to be on the northern half of Maravista. On the southern half of Maravista, as I showed you before in one of the other slides on another presentation, the intrusion was nominal. It's only going to be actually at the intersections on the lower end of Maravista because that whole main was directional drilled.
Okay. Okay. And then it's Great Bay Road that runs,
Yes.
that, that has the enormous potholes. I mean, do you do any of that, or that's not on this project?
I'm not quite sure which part you're talking about. If you're talking about the erosion?
No.
Because there are no mains physically going in on Great Bay. The mains are going on the lateral streets, but they're not physically going in on Great Bay.
It's just you have to use it while they're working on Maravista, and it is very difficult going through there.
Oh, yes. Oh, yes.
So I just wonder if you're going to make it a little nicer?
We'll, we'll, we'll do our best. We'll do our best. But Great Bay, Great Bay is a touchy road.
Yeah.
It is a touchy road. Yes.
Yeah, I know you had a number of meetings with plumbers, and people are actually going to do these connections and reroute the sewage lines in the houses and out of the houses. Do we have enough plumbers kind of indoctrinated and trained, or at least briefed on what's going to be required in order to take care of this huge demand, which is going to suddenly emerge? And you're saying maybe most of that will get done by the end of 2016? That sounds like a lot of work, fourteen hundred homes connected. How, from your perspective, do you think we have the private plumbing contractors that are going to be able to handle this a little?
A lot of the mains are going to be in by 2016, the end of 2016. Most of the main lane work, as far as the actual connections, the only area that's ready for it is Falmouth Heights. Maravista isn't going to be ready till next year to begin with. So it kind of cuts it in half right there, if you will. So during the course of this year, you'll see connections going in in Falmouth Heights. And from the indoctrination perspective, we've had a couple of meetings with them to try to cover many of the issues of permitting, estimating, and timing with regard to contractors and plumbers and teaming arrangements. We've covered all that so far. As part of the contract for the pumps, we also have two actual installation training sessions scheduled in that with the manufacturer that will be with all the plumbers and the contractors, so that they'll be able to ask anything they want, and they'll get complete instructions and details on all of the installations. So we'll be doing at least two of those.
Do you think it'd be appropriate for us to create a draft contract for a homeowner to give them some guidance as to what directions they should be giving their plumber, their contractor, their, to connect them? Is there any way that we could create a model for that? Just because we know, and I think that your office certainly knows a lot more than the general homeowner is.
One of the things that we have provided during one of those meetings with the plumbers and the contractors was basically the checklist form for the installation process, where that's why it is important that a plumber be the one who is overseeing the installation, because that who's, who's actually going to certify the installation at the end. And that, that goes a long way by itself with a homeowner on that, on that process. And we actually do have a number of good plumbers and contractors that have been working with the homeowner. with the homeowners out there, so I was very, very pleased with that. So, I'm pretty confident in what the end results are going to be.
You make, the way it's set up right now, it really makes more sense to have a plumber be the general contractor for the job, or are there also general contractors out there that are willing to oversee the entire job for you?
By town meeting vote, that plumber is the one that is responsible. So, he can sub, he can work with the general contractor, and a lot of them are very, very knowledgeable as well. But overall, the plumber is the one that's going to be the lead and be the one who is responsible, so.
How do you actually project the amount of change orders that you might anticipate in a project of this size? I mean, is it a general percentage of the volume of the work, or is it the type of work?
From a percentage perspective, you generally try to keep it within 5%, all right? In reality, on a project of this size, it can go over that, but we've already planned, planned for that, so we have sufficient contingency to be able to cover it. As far as the number of change orders, it actually depends. Believe it or not, there are relatively few change orders on the Little Pond Sewer Service Area contract, as opposed to what might happen with the water plant. And then there's a difference between the change order and a, and a work directive, okay? Directives are similar to a change order, but then they get combined and put into a change order. But they have a monetary value that actually affects a change on the contract value. But overall, from a percentage perspective, you, you keep it within 5%.
Any other questions? Maybe did you, one, if I have your hand up. Okay. Any other questions?
Thank you.
We're going to take a quick recess. We've been sitting here for six hours, and we're going to take a brief recess and then come right back.
Next item is a report discussion on the town parking policy. Including the consideration of the amendment to the traffic rules and orders dated May 19th, 2003. This is in particular regarding the maximum time permitted for parking on Main Street. And where the police of town. Chief Dunn is here to engage in this conversation.
And Mr. Chairman, maybe I can make a couple introductory remarks. We'll need to get the microphone over with Chief Dunn's assistants to the podium. Since the board last met on this, Chief Dunn and I met with the Michael Gasparian and some representatives of the downtown Business Association to talk about this concept. We met on a morning. It was the, that was at least the second meeting that Chief Dunn has been involved with. I was not able to make the first one, but I did make the recent one. And we had a lively discussion, summarized the issues once again. The board may recall, I advised you generally that there was a representation that a survey was going to be conducted of the chamber members. Unfortunately, I learned today that that survey was not conducted. So, the board, if you prefer to have that, some survey results, Chief Dunn and I can ask Michael Gasparian if that can be re-initiated. On the other hand, you may feel you have sufficient information to move forward on that, and I welcome Chief Dunn's further comments. Just a couple reminders, what we've talked about is a one-year pilot. Again, this only applies to Main Street area downtown, not to off-street parking lots. And our, the existing policy and rules and orders limit parking on Main Street downtown to one hour, which is a circumstance that we feel is untenable and is a significant reason that we're coming to you to discuss a, at least a one-year change that we would come back and report to you on, if that's agreeable. And there's another area, as a reminder, that we spoke about adding some parking meters in as well. So, having said that, as you noted, Mr. Chairman, Chief Dunn is with us, and members of the board may have comments and further questions.
I thought on the parking meters, is it on Scranton Avenue?
Uh, no, on...
No, on Clinton.
Clinton Avenue. Thank you, Chief.
I thought we had voted to go ahead with that.
There was no vote taken on any parking issues at all. We'd certainly welcome one on Clinton at a minimum, if the board would be so agreeable.
Well, I would be happy to entertain that discussion briefly, and I would hope that we would go ahead with that recommendation of putting some parking meters there. As to how many hours that is, it may fit within our larger discussion, at least to get the meters put in there.
I wouldn't want to make any decision on parking hours without the fruits of all the labor of the chamber in terms of the survey, because I know there was still great disagreement as to the length of time, and the business folks wanted extended, more extended time than I think was recommended. So, I feel uncomfortable not having that information before us.
I'm afraid I'm going to disagree that we gave, I mean, we started this process six weeks ago, asked them for that information. I know how I feel about it, and, you know, we gave them plenty of opportunity at that time. We had some people speak, we invited them to come to this meeting, we asked them to get the survey. I'm ready to go ahead without necessarily needing that information.
But I think Clinton and Scranton, those are the two we're talking about?
Just Clinton.
Oh, just Clinton, not Scranton?
No, just Clinton.
No, Clinton Ave.
Just to put some meters on that end of the harbor.
There's nine spots down there, and currently they're just monitored by signage, four-hour parking. However, they're pretty much all-day parking, because they're used by people going over to the island to work and things like that, construction workers. And we just enforce it when we have time randomly. So, I had talked to the manager, and I think that would be a good metered spot. There's a restaurant down there, people can walk along the harbor, and it'll give them some, you know, opportune time to be able to use that area.
That's a no-brainer.
Yeah, that is. Their car is always there, parked every day.
Okay, what kind of meters? Regular meters?
We were proposing identical meters to what we have elsewhere in the community, and with the same time limits. Metered parking is two-hour parking, is that right, Chief?
Two-hour parking, yes. And the same fee, quarter, set up the same way.
Quarters, feet at quarters?
Well, we're currently looking at new meters, period. In fact, we have a vendor coming in tomorrow. But if we were to put meters up, there would be coin-fed meters right at the moment.
Mr. Patterson?
Yeah, I guess I'm wondering why we wouldn't use that as a test site for some of the other, for newer meters, and just see how those work, rather than put the old meters in, unless we have them in stock, and then have to take them out.
Well, I plan on using the meters that we're going to lose from the Steamship Authority.
Oh, okay, fine.
And they're really old.
They have another two or three years of life, and then we'll replace them with new ones.
They're really, really old.
But I guess that can't be until after September, because the Steamship lot is still metered over the summer, right?
I'll find some to put in there. If we, you know, if you approve it, we'll find some meters to put in there.
Right now, we could put the Heitman's there, couldn't we?
That's true.
Rebecca?
How many are you talking about on Clinton?
I think there's only, there's like nine spots down there.
Nine spots?
So, it's more doubles than a single, I think, is what we said.
Something like that, yeah.
Okay, and there is not any room on Scranton to put a few more in?
Not on Scranton, no. Scranton, Scranton is, there's no parking on Scranton.
What is right at the end of the marina?
Falmouth Heights Road?
Oh, you're thinking Robbins Road? Robbins Road already is approved for meters. We take them down in the winter, because there are no businesses there in the winter.
Okay, yes, okay, it's Robbins Road.
Robbins Road has meters. We're talking further down the harbor, very end of the harbor.
Yep, okay.
The end of Scranton.
Yeah, there's a curb cut out there, sidewalk and all that, and it allows for, could be 10, I haven't counted them recently, but nine to 10 spots.
Okay.
Motion to authorize the installation of parking meters on Clinton Avenue?
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, just to confirm, that's with the understanding that they will be managed and have the same time limits as existing meters elsewhere in town?
Yes.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you. So, parking on Main Street, are we prepared to have this discussion tonight, or do we want to hear from the chamber?
Well, I think we should hear from the chamber. I mean, they do represent, and from the Business Association, the Village Association, we should hear from them. I think we need to know what their needs are in terms of employee parking, and where they think that their, their employees can park, particularly at night, you know, when they're working late.
This doesn't affect night. This is not affecting nighttime. This is only, this is 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m.
This would be similar to the parking in the metered spots. At 6:00 p.m., it's open, it's free.
And I guess I'm not sure what more we can do. We've asked them to give us information. I know I've talked to a few of the different business people.
Well, I think we need to know how many employees we're talking about. I mean, they say their employees, so some people may have two, and some may have 25.
And it's not really just an employee issue. It has a lot to do with people being able to, you know, you have a family, young kids, it could be an hour wait for the restaurant, by the time you shop around, go, you know, do, walk up and down Main Street, get into the restaurant, be able to be served, then come back out. It's just really, what I've heard, was a lot of the businesses thought that it could, perhaps not, that sort of day could not be done with two-hour parking.
I agree.
I've heard the same, but two hours is too short.
I agree, and that's why I'm fully prepared to vote for three-hour parking on Main Street. The most important thing for parking is for people to always think there's a spot. They say, oh, yeah, you drive to Falmouth, you can always find a spot. And that's what we're trying to do, is make, create that mentality that, oh, you never have trouble finding a parking spot in Falmouth.
But you know what? If we do that now, without taking into consideration a whole parking plan, you end up defending something that you may not have to defend if you had, if we had the whole parking plan done. You know, how are we going to use the municipal lot behind? Are we going to have any restrictions there, or any reserve parking, whatever? I don't know. But I think in order to do something with downtown, with the street, you have to also consider what we should do with all the other public parking that's available. And even in the summertime, there's a school. I think you have to put a whole plan together and let people react to a whole plan. If you just do one piece of it, it's, you're going to be explaining it forever.
Mr. Chairman, yeah, the point's very well made, and we certainly agree. The Chief and I fully anticipate exploring in greater depth the off-street parking. Our dilemma is, you have a one-hour limit now. And that one-hour limit, if we begin to enforce it, is going to create a great consternation and difficulties on-street on Main Street.
Where's the one-hour parking?
Everywhere on Main Street.
All of Main Street.
Oh, you mean it's on the books from the 30th?
It is on the books now.
1920s.
From 2003. No, it was 1993?
2003.
2003.
2003?
Yes.
So, rather than wait a number of months or another year, while we can study everything comprehensively, which would be a wonderful ideal, we feel the Main Street needs to be addressed because of this unusual circumstance. And as the Chief and I have represented, we anticipate working with Public Works and others to look at the off-street issues. But because of the urgency of this and the reality of that one-hour limitation, that's why we bring that to you right now.
And as far as the off-street, and I've had conversations with people, and we had at the meeting, it was a very good meeting, we don't really plan on tackling that right now, just because some of the, some of the ideas that came up, and I think I mentioned before, is maybe it could be reevaluated with engineers to find more spots and everything else. You have apartments on Main Street, they need a place to park, and they was talking about maybe a sticker program. There's a lot of different things there. The only thing that the Police Department will enforce in those parking lots are vehicles that are in fire lanes or handicap spots or blocking. We will address those spots. Like I said, what we rolled out, and what I've told the Main Street Business Association and the Village Association that is attend, is, you know, the complaints, there's no turnover. Cars are there all day. So, I mean, by rights, I should be giving them a ticket every hour. But I don't think an hour is long enough. So, we haven't been enforcing it. We've been enforcing the handicapping, fire lanes, and things like that. Two hours, I think, is enough. And isn't, when I say two hours, there isn't going to be a police officer, or there isn't going to be somebody standing. The two-hour rule is like the honor rule. You're going to like, oh, good, the sign's there, and I'm going to, I'm going to leave in two hours. It's not always going to happen. If there's a parking spot, and I'm walking, I may not get back to that spot for another half an hour to an hour before I can actually mark you as being in that spot. I don't know when you parked there. There's no meters. It's different with the meters. The meters tell me, you've got 15 minutes left, you've got 10 minutes left. This is going to be, you know, if we use the iChalk and some other, we looked at some other software the other day, to kind of monitor it as the individual walks around, you could be in that spot already for an hour, and I don't have a clue you were there.
But the person's there thinking...
Thinking it's two hours.
Correct. I think that thought for...
But now they should have an hour, and they don't move.
They don't know the rule, though. And we're going to educate them and make sure they do know.
True.
I think what you said in terms of the three hours, I'd be willing to, you know, to go forth on that right now, because most of what the businesses said, we heard the same thing, two hours was too small. It had to be at least three. And so, I'm comfortable with moving ahead with that.
Yeah, as a beginning effort, three hours, I would think would work.
This year, if I got...
I was going to say, would you do it on a pilot program, so we can get some data from the business people? I want to get data from, that's what we told them. And that's what I told them at the meeting, and Mr. Suso was there, is that try it as a pilot program, two hours, three hours, whatever the board decides, we'll enforce. And we will enforce the one hour, if you leave it at one hour.
And give the times, would it start at nine in the morning? What time does it start in the morning and finish?
The reason I suggested to was so that we have consistency through the town. We have two hours, Falmouth Heights, we have two hours, Robbins Road, we're now going to have two hours on Clinton Ave, Woods Hole. So, as people move around, they're not trying to figure out where, how long can I stay here? Where can I go? I would suggest that we follow the same suit, as far as consistency, as far as when, treat it as if there were meters. Parking after 6 o'clock, there's no enforcement.
But when does it start in the morning?
Eight?
6:00 a.m.? I think it's, you know, 6:00 to 6:00, 12 hours?
And that's what these other streets have with the meters?
The meters are, yeah.
Six to 6:00?
I believe it's 6:00.
I think it's 8:00.
Is it 8:00? 8:00 to 6:00? Okay, 8 to 6:00.
Well, 6:00 isn't a bad idea for Main Street, though, because when they're, in the summer, when there are a lot of events...
That's correct.
It starts early. I have seen, at 6:30 in the morning or 7:00, Main Street is completely filled with cars, because they park there to go to the beach.
Go to the beach, or...
For the road races, or whatever.
I mean, at 3:02, they can park there until 8:00 the next morning, but, I mean, I guess where I would be leaning is, I would love to have, I would be in support of three hours on Main Street, and three hours at the meters, and make it uniform. You know, that right now, I know right now on the meters, it says two hours, but if we're going to go to new meters, it'll be easier for these new meters to be able to let you know what the length of time is. But I know what we do...
I don't think two hours is enough for Main Street. I mean, two hours is too short.
That's right, same, three hours, and I would be uniform, make it everywhere.
Because there's so much to do on Main Street. It isn't like you're just going to a restaurant, like you might in Woods Hole. And there's so many other things you could do on Main Street.
I, I'm not worried about inconsistency. I mean, anybody that's used to parking meters looks at the parking meters to see how long you have. And the fact that they have two hours other than Main Street is fine. I'm going to make a motion that we do a pilot for a year of a three-hour meter on Main Street from...
No meters.
I mean, pardon me, of parking, thank you, from 8:00 a.m. to 6:00.
8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., three hours, no meters, Main Street only.
Where's, so, where's Main Street?
Well, the Main Street area would be Main Street, Shore Street Extension, that, you know, the roads and through there, the parking.
Second?
In fact, that was, that was spoken about at the meeting, and the chamber was supposed to get back to us, up to, I believe we talked Gifford Street, the fire department.
Yeah, Gifford Street.
Because there, you know, there are parking spots there, so Gifford Street to the Village Green.
Okay.
And Shore Street Extension.
But not Catherine Lee Bates.
Unless you want Catherine Lee Bates.
Correct, Main Street only.
Right.
Difficulty is, are we going to have to have tons and tons of signs, which I was hoping we could avoid having a lot of additional signage on it, but I'm not sure how we're going to let people know if we don't have signs up.
Tons and tons of signs.
Well, we think we can do a modest sign program and not overdo it. And the other, the other point that the Chief has talked about is that we'll have a transition period during which we'll be leafleting people with the Police Department's assistance to give them some time to understand that we're going through a transition, and it's not unlimited parking any longer.
Yeah, wow. Courtesy tickets.
This isn't about catching people and issuing fines, it's about managing parking effectively, encouraging turnover, which we're not getting very effectively right now on Main Street. And I do want to emphasize, in addition to Main Street, the Chief has mentioned the Village Green, actually both sides of the Village Green, because there is some parking that floats onto both sides, and only one side is Main Street. So, but we intend to do all sides of the Village Green.
And the only spot I believe that we will leave alone, and should be left, and I will recommend to you, is in front of the post office, or it's just 15 minutes.
Absolutely, yeah.
Just because people just run in and out of there, and if somebody's sitting there for three hours, you're not going to get your mail.
Absolutely, appreciate that. So, I believe we have a motion, second, to approve the three-hour parking on Main Street, and to reinforce them. All those in favor, or do we have any public comment on this? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next item is to consideration, to approve in concept the use of landfill for solar lease, and authorize the town manager to negotiate the lease agreement. We do have an official motion on the, which we can take a look at. Any discussion on the...
I think we've had the discussion, have we not, or unless there's new information? No.
I know that we still have not seen a lease in our hands for us to take a look at, and I'm certainly comfortable with authorize the town manager. I guess I still do have some reservations about the $100,000 that the EDIC gets, and the $1 we get for the lease, and I, I'm still a little bit uneasy about that. You know, and as Mr. Fittern did point out, that's $2.5 million that the EDIC gets, and I'd like to know for what, I haven't really heard from them as to what they're proposing that they are getting from it. They certainly have done work in creating the RFP, but I'd love for them to let us know also that they're going to be responsible for maintaining this contract, and that was not put forward to us, that they're taking responsibility for that in our meetings, nor have I seen a lease that says they're responsible for that. I would feel more comfortable if it were a 50-50 split, you know, that they got $50,000, the town got $50,000 for the use of the land.
We have some representatives here could address that. Perhaps Mr. Galasso could address that question?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Michael Galasso, the chairman of the Falmouth EDIC. I want to cover a couple things, sort of bring everyone up to date where we're at, and then we can get into the actual lease itself. You know, with me tonight's Jim Fox, Dave Eldredge of the Falmouth EDIC, and Brian Morrissey with Citizens Energy is also here. And since our last meeting here, we had a coordination meeting last Wednesday at the suggestion of Heather and the manager's office, and include members of the manager's office, the town attorney, the chair and the vice chair of the board. We put together a little flow chart. Understand, the last time that we met with you, we gave you a lot of information, there were a lot of figures going around, so we wanted to sort of give everyone an opportunity to understand the pieces and how this all goes together. The other thing that Heather suggested that we are doing, and that the EDIC is a good point about, you know, how the EDIC uses its money, is to hire a consultant, a project sort of coordinator, a firm that the town has worked with before, called Sustainable Energy Advantage. They will be looking on behalf of the town and the EDIC at all the agreements that are going to be drafted, and providing their input, and help along with the process. And, you know, there's a number of agreements that we're asking you to negotiate and sign, the land lease, which is really called the intergovernmental agreement, and that has been forwarded to town council for his review, and the power purchase agreement. Those are two agreements. And we've also asked you to sign on to a number of applications that Citizens has to make in order to keep the project moving forward.
Mike?
Yes?
Pardon me, and with the chair's permission, just to, before you leave that point, so in order to facilitate the town's work on this project, it was suggested that the EDIC spend, it's about $25,000?
$20,000.
$20,000, okay. In order to, it's sort of a project review professional, or what would you call the, the EDIC has agreed to make the expenditure?
With SEA?
Yes.
Okay. Well, Jason is, who works with SEA. They're going to do a couple of things. One, they're going to review all the agreements and review all the applications, and they're going to provide guidance to the town manager's office and to the board, too. That's one thing they're going to be doing. And that, and also, from a coordination standpoint, because we're sending a lot of different documents to a lot of different folks, you know, we're going to put every, all the documents are going to go to them, so they can review them, and then they'll forward on their comments to the town manager's office and the town attorney.
Thank you.
So, we're trying to simplify the process, because we're under a tight timeframe, and also get some good overview at the same time. We don't want to rush anything, but we want to make sure everyone's getting a good overview.
And reduce the burden to the town manager's office in terms of this project, and also assist the EDIC?
Yes. And that's being done at a cost of about $20,000 that the EDIC has agreed to pick up.
Thank you.
And so, the goal, the finish line, if you recall before, was we needed to get this project underway to make sure we didn't lose the federal energy credits. Well, those were extended by Congress, so that's not as much of a rush. The rush right now, what's called the S-Rex, those are the certificates that are given out that create some of the value for the project, and there's only a certain amount of those, because our state legislature hasn't extended the amount of those that are available. And we have to meet an application date of the first part of April, and have that application in. In order to do that, Citizen needs a couple of things. One is, they have to have site control, and they have to have all the other approvals in hand by the first of April. That's the approval from Mass DEP, the Cape Cod Commission, and Natural Heritage. So, they have to have all those applications approved when they submit their application to reserve the S-Rex. That's probably the most critical part right now. The other critical part that we're working on is trying to determine how much of a demand, how many kilowatt-hours the town uses, okay? Because we have, we do have some, you know, renewable energy credits that we're getting right now, and we are making our buildings more energy efficient, so it's looking at what's the current demand, how many kilowatt-hours, and what is going to be the demand in the future? Because the town doesn't want to purchase more power from the solar project than what it's going to need. So, we're in the process, and with the help of Sustainable Energy Advantage, we've gathered, I think we have most of the town energy bills right now, and the schools, and, correct me, Jim, if I'm wrong, but there's somewhere around 8 million kilowatt-hours that we think the town currently uses. That's what the current demand is. But we've got to still continue to go through that. Because all the numbers that we presented to you previously all depend upon knowing what our demand is, how much power we need off the solar project. So, moving on to your question, which is, you know, how much of the ground lease should be going to the EDIC, and what is it that we would be using it for? I think it's good just to visit a little bit of the history of the EDIC and what we've done with the very little bit of money that's been allocated to us over the years, or that we generated from projects that we've done. Obviously, the tech park in Edgerton Drive, creating the jobs there, and creating property tax revenue that came into the town. Loans that we've given to small businesses, the loans that we've given to nonprofits, including Highfield Theater and the folks up there. The $1.4 million grant that we brought to the town to restore our bus depot, our train station, Falmouth Station. And, you know, the solar at the landfill project, which over the 25-year period would generate somewhere between 8 to 15 million dollars, and once, we'll be able to nail those numbers down a little bit more in the next few weeks, in revenue. And we've done that with a very little bit, with a volunteer staff, and very little bit of money from the town. So, some of the things that we, that we see using the funds for, we're going to need a staff person, an administrative assistant. The solar at the landfill, monitoring that is going to cost us about $15,000 a year just to monitor that project, to meet all our obligations there. We've got to fund a reserve for the train depot. The Mass DOT, when we got the $1,004 grant from them, they wouldn't allow us to put any reserves in there. And yes, we're going to be leasing the train depot out and generating some revenue there, but we want to make sure we're putting aside enough money so that train station never looks the way that it looks today again. So, that's about $5,000 a year. We fund a small business loan fund, about $25,000 a year. We've got a couple of studies that we want to do. We've got almost $20,000 operating overhead. That all comes to $100,000. That doesn't leave us a lot of extra funds to do some of the projects that sometimes just pop up. I mean, one good thing about the EDIC is that we can react quickly to projects, to issues that come up. You know, we don't need a lot of approvals, we've got a very effective board, you know, not everything that we do needs to go back to, to town meeting. I mean, a good example is the $20,000 we're allocating for the consultant for this project. So, I think we've, we've not only earned the $100,000 a year, but I think it's a good investment. We turned $100,000 for this solar project into a $10 million savings for the town. That's the type of work that we do. And I think it's a good investment for the town, it's a good investment for the board, for the, for the funds. As I mentioned, Brian Morrissey from Citizens Energy is here. As I mentioned, Brian Morrissey from Citizens Energy is here. Mr. Chairman, if you'd like to hear a couple of comments from him, they're going to be doing their selected developer. I thought it'd be a good idea for you to maybe hear a few comments from Brian if time permits.
I guess I'm just really not comfortable, we have not signed any contract with this, you know, in public to be hearing from, some of this play is a little bit premature.
Okay, no problem.
I do appreciate him being here. Mr. Patterson?
Yeah, Michael, I brought up the fact that we don't have any kind of strategic plan from the EDIC as to what future benefits you might be offering to the town. Did you guys do any brainstorming in that regard? You've talked about overhead costs and what have you, and kind of managing the solar panel facility over.
True.
But you haven't really talked about any future benefits that might be yielded from a larger staff.
I think two of the main ones that are on our agenda and have been is the last mile on the Open Cape. We've budgeted, depending, of course, on negotiations here, some funds in order to move that project forward, about thirty thousand dollars. We've made a couple of applications to get some grant funds for that, and most of the time, we haven't been able to leverage that with any of our own money in order to qualify for some of those grants. But the Open Cape's been on our radar, and is a study that we need to get done to find out what the demand is for that last mile connection for both businesses and residents. So that's one of the top items that are on our agenda moving forward. The other is, there's been a lot of discussion about whether or not the EDIC could become some type of redevelopment agency, and what that would entitle, whether or not we would have to create a whole new different board, a whole new different set of policies and everything, but looking at the possibility of the formation of redevelopment agency was another, one of the other items. And again, we always want to fund our small business loan program that we provide to small businesses in our community. We try to fund that at twenty-five thousand dollars a year.
I guess we're, I guess, still are reluctant, is I know there are going to be some costs that the town is going to have to take on in overseeing this, and it just, there's no way it's going to be avoided. Whether it's even just, all we're having to do is figure out a way of selling the extra energy that we get. Somebody in the town's going to have to be doing that, and there's going to be someone, you know, in our administration, somebody in the town is going to have to cover that. And to have no income, the town's getting, all we're getting is savings, no income to cover that cost, is going to cover the cost of the town, and that's where I was still, whether you're saying fifteen thousand dollars of this is for the EDIC to manage it, maybe it makes more sense to have some more money come back to the town, and the town take on that responsibility in addition to the responsibility we know is going to fall to the town.
Well, go ahead.
And I'm just thinking that town council's workload is going to go up. I don't think there's any doubt in my mind about that. It's just a specific function in addition to our town manager's overall management and oversight of what's going on there. So I agree with you. I think, I think we need to take a very close look at just what's going to happen to the town's costs associated with, as I said, managing and overseeing that use of our landfill. It's going to be our property regardless of what happens on it.
Well, wouldn't it be useful if we had a proposed lease agreement that the town manager could review and discuss, and maybe, I mean, we have to start with something in our hand, I would think.
That's what we're pursuing currently, we just don't have it in any complete form. We just came in in draft form recently.
So it would seem to me we would need a proposed lease agreement that you could review and council could review and we could discuss, and then, it's hard to vote on something when you don't know what, huh?
Now, on the other hand, I would be very comfortable voting in concept.
In concept, yeah. If it says concept, that's true.
And, you know, authorize the town manager to lease, and even to start the process of that we are going to allow the land to be used for it, I still think we have some lease negotiations to work out, but I don't want to, that I'm reluctant to do this project at all, no. I'm so fully supportive of it and prepared to vote that tonight, it's just the lease, and I guess the intergovernmental agreement you're talking about, which EDIC is not a part of the government, so it really can't be considered that, but.
Well, if I may just say on that one second, intergovernmental agreement is what your town council suggested we use for the lease.
All right.
So that's what was suggested by town council, that we use this intergovernmental agreement.
In just furthering what you, as the chair, have suggested, the, we do have an oversight working group that Mr. Galasso introduced at the beginning, and I think that, you know, not a vote tonight authorizing the town manager to, you know, proceed with the lease negotiation in that, in that light would make sense, because we already are looking, we've hired a consultant, which will give us a more specific idea of costs ahead. I know Mashpee has recently done a big project. We can get some more information about anticipated costs such as council fees from that, so this, this working board can supply information to the town manager in terms of that lease negotiation.
I've also done some research on the numbers that have been put forward on the kilowatt hours, and you could not get a better plan, a better project that's being presented from those numbers. I mean, that, everyone's saying, wow, you've really negotiated a very, very good deal, and so I do want to make sure you're clear that, how supportive are, we're appreciative of that aspect of it.
And if I may, I can make a suggestion. What's important for right now, obviously, it sounds like we still need to do some homework on what the dollar amount's going to be, and provide you some more information, we don't mind doing that. But I think what's important, if you could, is to give the town manager, whoever needs to have the authority to sign on a couple of these applications that need to be, that need to be forwarded to the various agencies. That's the Mass DEP post-closure use permit, the natural resources, and the Cape Cod Commission. And I know you haven't seen those full applications yet, I know you have on the Mass DLP, but those are applications that we need to get into those various agencies. So being able to get some authorization so we can forward those, and then we can come back to you when we have the final numbers on how much power the town's going to use and how much savings we're going to have, maybe we can continue the discussion on what the lease rate should be between us and the town at that time, as a suggestion.
I would personally take in a motion just to approve the concept, use the concept.
Heather, Heather, sorry.
I don't want to interrupt the board.
Sorry.
Mr. Fitterin, you had a question?
Comment? I have to say that I completely agree with your line of thinking, and I'd just like to point out, and I might have misunderstood, but in the arithmetic Mr. Galasso just gave us, all of it didn't seem to add up to a hundred thousand dollars, and it included things that he's already paying for now, so it's kind of mixing apples and oranges to come up with the, a larger figure, and I don't think you should lose sight of that.
Thank you. Ms. Harper?
I just want to recognize a couple of things. One, I want to just correct Michael. Sleckman Moran actually recommended the working group meeting, and I helped convene that, so it was Sleckman Moran that brought that together. It was a very effective meeting, there was a very detailed review of the project, we had some expert assistance at least digesting the project, and I think bringing a comfort level that there can be a central point of contact to help facilitate the flow of information between the town, the EDIC, and the general contractor, which is Citizens Energy, to make sure that that work moves ahead, because remember, not only are they going to be our power supplier, but they're also going to be the general contractor performing work on town property. So it's a complicated project, it's a very good project, and will provide tremendous benefit to the town, and it was clear that we're willing to be, work together and be creative about what site control means, to see what type of votes the board can take to provide DEP with the necessary site control, perhaps short, falling short of a lease agreement to allow all of this to develop, to take shape, for us to really put our arms around the project and present to the board a final lease agreement that outlines what the EDIC's roles and responsibilities are, what the town's responsibilities are, both initially in the general construction project and then permanently as part of the power purchase arrangement. So it is a complicated project, I think there's a lot of people with a lot of information that will allow it to move forward with the appropriate professional pace, allowing for the right review from town officials.
Dr. Fox?
We clearly heard your concern about additional overhead for the town and managing this process forward. I think we've demonstrated that's what we're here to do, I think we can negotiate with the town administration of what, exactly what rules they want us going forward, and that weight can be put on us. Not only, because, not only us, but with working with Citizens Energy and other consultants, whoever it needs to be, and take the weight off the town, and we, that, we could, you could add that into our lease negotiations, that'd be an additional responsibility we could take going forward.
I just don't think there's a way of taking it all.
Well, we'll do it as much as we can. I mean, give it to us, that's why we're here. I mean, we're, that's why we brought it forward.
But I mean, even if it's consolidating all the electrical bills, there are going to be things that the town is going to, somebody in the town's going to have to do something, I'm not sure how much, and that's where I'm still.
Absolutely, absolutely, but we will be in an ideal position with our contractor, Citizens Energy, to bring it to the town and just ask for the, do as much as we can, but somebody in the town is actually have to, going to pull it out of the file. Or you could link us up with Eversource, work us into your plan and give us the responsibility. We're here to do it.
No, there's only so much time, responsibility that we can give away to quasi-public corporation. But anyway, I think these are details we can work out, and to Mr. Fitterin's point, I think there was also an idea of having an administrative person, and that salary you did not list in the numbers you mentioned, which does, I think, get closer to the hundred thousand you were talking about.
He did, he did. He said two people, actually, if I heard him correctly. Two minutes, he said a director and staff.
I don't think the dollar figure, I think.
No, total dollar figures weren't there, but they add up pretty quickly. I mean, I think if you look at the examples of what we've done so far, give us some more things to do, whatever, there's a lot of visioning that could be done, a lot of planning, plenty of things. We've been, we're three years on this one, and it's a really, really big project. See, give us another assignment, watch what we can do.
So this time, I entertain a motion to at least prove in concept the use of the landfill in going forward with the EDIC, working with Citizens Energy Corporation, just in concept one, and then we have a more formal motion also.
So moved, I think we're all in agreement here.
Second.
Motion second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none. Mr. Moran, if you'd read the formal motion we also need to put on the table.
Just for the nuts and bolts of what the, Mr. Galasso said he needs. I move that the board authorize the town manager to sign a document to be submitted to the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection by Teague and Bond Engineers on behalf of the Falmouth EDIC and Citizens Energy Corporation, which document is titled "Major Post-Closure Use Permit Application" and requests an appropriate permit to use the town's capped landfill for a solar array project as proposed by the Falmouth EDIC and Citizens Energy Corporation. The town manager is authorized to sign said document upon his receiving assurances from Weston and Sampson engineers that the information contained in the document is true, accurate, and complete.
We have a motion? Second for discussion at least?
I'll second it for discussion.
Okay.
Does this?
Discussion?
May I ask a question?
Sure.
As follows, does this include the proposed lease agreement?
No.
Okay, as long as that's a separate item. Can I ask Heather, is this something that you feel like is appropriate? You actually worked on this working group?
This was drafted by Frank Duffy.
It is.
And is recommended to allow us to take the next step.
Great.
Okay, any other further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none. Were there other signatures? You had mentioned a couple of other signatures that you, are there, is there anything else you need at this time, or is it just the DEP major post-closure use permit application?
Major natural conservancy. I think there's an application, Brian, correct me, to the resource.
Should be two, one for Cape Cod Commission, and then another for?
Natural resource. Yeah, natural habitat. So those are, those are the three.
We discussed that at the meeting.
As may be required.
Okay. So we should put that into a motion also that to authorize the town manager to sign a letter for the major conservancy and for the Cape Cod Commission application.
I'll amend my motion to, so state.
No, second to amended motion.
All the vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, the ayes have it. So we'll take care of that.
Thank you very much.
We should also then have a vote to authorize the town manager to negotiate the lease agreement. This will not, of course, be to sign it, but to do the negotiations on our behalf, and then the lease agreement would come back to us.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, one item, just to clarify, I've not seen the applications to the nature conservancy or Cape Cod Commission. My experience suggests that sometimes those include language that may, may include confirmations that this board has taken certain actions that you have not yet taken, and if so, I'll just, to advise the board, I'll be working with town council, there may have to be some adjustments. In other words, if there's language there that says this board has authorized or approved a land lease, which you have not yet done, we'll have to make some adjustments there. And we've done that with a letter that was required in the past and some of the other language, so just wanted to apprise the board of that. Generally, in the spirit of cooperation, we're there a hundred percent, but some fine tuning has to be there so that I am not in any way misrepresenting the authority that you're giving me.
Appreciate that. Okay. So we have a motion and a second to authorize town manager to negotiate the lease agreement. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, the ayes have it. Thank you very much. Thank you for coming, Brian.
Thank you.
For accusing myself of against passing stats, right?
Right, and this is going to be postponed.
I don't know.
Next item, Ms. Moran will be accusing herself of this, is discussion about the McGanta Crossing LLC, LIP project, LIP project in affordable housing. Mr. Galasso, you're back.
Yes, I am, wearing a different hat. Michael Galasso, McGanta Crossing LLC. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At our last meeting, you requested that we go back and take a look to see whether or not we could add an additional affordable housing unit to this, to this project. Just to recap, it's a, it's an existing LIP that we've modified to add two units and change the design a little bit to make it more pleasing for the, for the neighborhood. And at the end of the meeting, you asked whether or not we would consider, what the effect would be to add an additional unit. I believe I said that, and we probably won't be able to do one at eighty percent, so we've taken a look, and if I may, I'll hand out the revised budget and walk you through it real quickly.
Just to be aware, we've also been doing some work, and we're trying to work off of the original LIP agreement with the, what's the name, the Cubby?
Cubby Construction.
And in that LIP agreement, which, as I think, the way you presented it, we were supposed to be working on the original one, and this is an extension of that, that their percent profit was, I think, twelve-point-six percent, and I sort of feel that's where we should be at, as the starting point for this LIP also, because it's an extension of the original one. Unless we want to start all over again, which we said we didn't want to do.
Yeah. Well, what construction costs were in two thousand eight, two thousand nine, and what they are today are a little bit different, but if you take a look at what we've just handed out, you can see.
The profit margin stays percentage-wise is still, percentage-wise.
So, talking about profit margins, DHCD allows a profit margin for the developer. Remember, a lot of times you have, like Cubby is a contractor and a developer, so he makes money from the contracting profit line, and he makes money from the development profit line.
Okay.
Okay. We're, we're not that right now. So DHCD allows a maximum of twenty percent. If a project falls below fifteen percent, they consider it to be an un economical project. So on what I just handed out to you, I've updated a couple line items. There are the line items that are in bold. It's the land carrying cost, because when this budget was put together previously, it was a year ago, we've been carrying the land for an additional year. Legal costs, Peter Freeman's here this evening, our legal costs have gone up. Peter does a great job, but that increased our costs in all, because the property taxes have. So those are the items that we've increased. We've held steady our construction costs, even though that number is over a year old. We've added one unit, a two-bedroom unit at a hundred-and-ten percent median income, the projected sales price, and these are always projected sales price because it really determines upon, you know, the size of the family that's going to move in there, is three-hundred-and-forty-five thousand. So when you add that additional unit in, our profit margin's down to twelve-point-oh-five percent.
So when you say you're adding it, I feel clear that it is not in addition as much as a transfer from a market to a. as a transfer from a market to a one-ten percent.
We're deleting one market rate unit and adding one.
Because I was worried when you first said that, you know, it's gonna be thirteen units instead of twelve.
No, 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 we're staying at twelve. Staying at twelve.
Just a couple comments.
Ms. Harper?
Yeah, I think this comes very close to where the board was hoping that you'd see it does increase the number of affordable units. I don't believe the one-ten AMI can be recorded on the subsidized housing inventory, is that correct?
That's correct.
So this would not count, the AMI unit, the one-ten percent of median income cannot be placed on the subsidized housing inventory, so it doesn't count towards the number of units that you're trying to generate on the town's official record of affordable units. So it doesn't meet that threshold for you. I also note that, and while I don't object necessarily to it, that the contingency reserve on this project is double that, which was by percentage, a double percentage than was on the original Holly Park project. So I don't know if the board wants to continue to place any more pressure on the developer, which really is your role, unfortunately, in this in this setting, because the goal is to create affordable housing, that you could still push for that unit should you so desire. And that would need to be worked out in the as the project moved forward, and hopefully with good project management could could fund that difference between the one-ten and the eighty. But really, it's the board's call. Clearly, there's been a lot of thought to get this to this point.
The idea that you gave us a budget two weeks ago that now is adjusted, I'm not sure why two weeks ago we didn't get these numbers.
Well, the budget that you had.
For the land carry and the legal.
The budget you had two weeks ago was the budget that we submitted, when we submitted our application a year ago.
Okay. All right, that makes sense. I guess.
Well, I guess I would say that it's a bit of an improvement over the last one in terms of the hundred and ten percent, but I would think that it could still be done with four units at eighty percent. I would think that would be some. See, when the Holly when the Holly Park one was done before, it was we clearly had a need for affordable housing, but this is a few years later, and the issue has become far more of a need in this community for affordable housing. And it's and the whole idea is raised in terms of the perception of the town, and I think we need to be representing what the needs of the town are and try to encourage the developer to do the four units affordable, that it's really a much greater benefit to the town than having three at eighty and one at a hundred and ten. I just know the need is so great.
And I agree, the need is so great. It's hard for a project like this, when it's really it's only twelve units or ten units, to be able to generate enough revenue. We did look at the number at eighty percent, and our the percent profit goes down to ten point one four percent. And I just don't think it's a financeable project. I don't think we'd end up getting anything out of it at that point. So we tried to squeeze as much as we can out of it. We're a little bit aggressive on our sales price for our market rate units. I know we have a contingency in there, but, you know, you wouldn't do a project this size without a ten percent contingency, you wouldn't get it financed.
Right.
You know, we've really kept our soft costs down to a minimum. We've got an architect who's volunteered a lot of time into the project already. You know, I'm in the business to build affordable housing. We've got some other projects that we're doing that will answer a lot of the concerns that you have. On this particular project, you know, we couldn't go down to ten point one four percent on a profit margin, it just wouldn't work, and that's what that other unit at eighty percent would end up creating. So I don't think we'd have a project going forward. I thought this was sort of a good compromise of getting one additional unit in there at a hundred and ten percent. As you know, you know, that median, that workforce housing, those people who are sort of in that median income group, they're very hard to serve too. So, you know, a nice, brand-new, energy-efficient, two-bedroom, two-bath condo in North Falmouth at three forty-five is a good a good deal for someone. And it would be, you know, these are affordable in perpetuity too, just not thirty years, they're all in perpetuity. So I understand your concern. We work every day to try to do more affordable housing here in the community. We've got some other projects that we're working on that we'll be bringing forward throughout the year, and that there are more units there, so we have more flexibility. This one with just twelve units, it's very difficult.
There is no talent financing going into this project. Is it something that the board would like to consider pushing? That one way to do it is to suggest that they're to apply for some town funds to be able to get that one-ten percent one down to an eighty percent one.
Through CPC?
Right now, it's great that we don't have anything the town's having put forward to be able to do it, but, you know, as a way, I think that Mr. Galasso has made an attempt in that direction. We're ninety thousand dollars away from it, as I see it, that, you know, he's like for three forty-five for that, if we can get that to two fifty, one, and then the eighty percent. And, you know, that if there's some way that we can encourage the application for it in addition to what, but I don't, CPC is not money we control, I don't think we have any to do that, so it's something we can promise, but.
Ninety thousand for one unit is a big subsidy. It's not in the range that you've.
No, I was kind of hoping that we split it down the middle, and we could find forty-five, and you could find forty-five.
Even forty-five is high, yeah, but.
Okay.
It's about right.
No.
Is that at all? Oh, excuse me.
But in some ways, it isn't just one, it would really be saying that the forty-five is helping get the four units, because without that, you're saying it's not doable, then all of a sudden, we don't get four new units. And if for forty-five thousand dollars, we can get four new affordable units, all of a sudden, say, you know, that's getting something for what we want. Heather?
I just want to comment that the board, I think, really just has to approach this from a policy perspective, and that this is what the board desires, is the four at eighty percent. I really do think it was a good faith effort to come in at the one-ten, understand the issues. You see LIP applications with very little profit presented in the development pro forma by generally by nonprofits that are in the business of not generating that, and every dollar goes back into the project. And, you know, make that policy decision, and let the project move forward to the zoning board of appeals, and the financing will work itself out. And if additional sources of funding are needed, then they're available in the town and in other places. Generally, the limit on a per unit has been under fifty thousand to create an affordable unit, and that's where we're the comfort level seems to be. So, I mean, I just encourage you to approach it from a policy perspective. If that really is where you sit in terms of a policy goal, then that's where you sit.
Sam?
You know, I just want to try to be a little bit more realistic about it. I mean, having one unit at a hundred and ten percent average median income is also an area that's needed in this town. It may not go on our, you know, affordable housing inventory, but it is a need for affordable housing, it just may not qualify that. So, you know, I want to be careful here, don't throw the baby out of the bath water, so to speak, because that's in the price range where families are looking for real estate, you know, and and we don't have a lot of that in this town. We don't have developers developing units in that kind of price range in any kind of significant quantity. So, I mean, I don't know where we draw the line, but I don't think that that's an unreasonable contribution to the town's housing needs, just to point that out. But, you know, I I agree with Heather, we need to establish a policy, but, you know, this is one project coming to us without any public money in it at this point, and I don't want to just simply discard it based on, you know, an arbitrary line that we draw.
I think the fact there isn't any any town money involved in it, and we do get four units, and even if one is a hundred and ten, at least there's four. I don't care if it's on the record or not. I mean, I'm just, I understand why it should be, but I think that was our last discussion, was can you get one more unit? Well, we do have one more. It's a hundred and ten instead of the eighty, but it is four units. And I do think the idea that the profit is fifteen percent, is that?
Twelve point oh five.
Twelve, oh, twelve point six is the profit. That I would agree that that we should we should vote for this, and I think that all of the work that has gone into it, I think we should support it.
The appropriate motion is to authorize the chairman of the board to sign a letter to the board of appeals outlining our decision.
I would say that based on this, we ought to really confirm the future in a policy, so we don't get caught up with this again. Heather's nodding her head, so we can get that done.
A policy has to number of percentage of.
Yes, yes.
Affordable housing units.
Because, you know, I mean.
For LIP applications.
This could be done without the town, in a way, it could be. I mean, you're a private developer, you'd go off and just do this on your own anyway. So so if to get the town involved in the resources of the town in managing a LIP, you know, we have to actually manage this, but go ahead, Heather.
Well, I think it's really important for the community to know the development rights that you're imbuing to the development. And this property by right could support a single unit, maybe two if you go for, you know, a particular special permit.
Right.
But it's a it's a one-point-seven acre parcel in a zoning district that will allow a single unit. So this is allowing a product to move forward with twelve units. So there's a lot of value that the town collectively is placing in the development. So that's what you're granting, as well as the waiver and relief from the zoning code and any local bylaws. So there's a lot to this, and that's the role that you're taking when you endorse a LIP project. Couldn't agree more that a policy would be very, very helpful.
Yeah, yeah, because we're really taking the place of mass housing on this project. I mean, that's the whole idea of a LIP, is that the developer doesn't have to go through mass housing. If it's a LIP, you go through the local the local community and the resources that the local community has. So it isn't that we're just looking at this from your perspective, we're looking at it from the town's perspective and our commitment to affordable housing and our commitment to to kind of endorsing the project based on on what we have in front of us.
And that's the way that we looked at it in the redesign that we did too.
Yeah, and I appreciate that you went back and took another look at it and do it.
You know, by having twelve units like this, though, the town is going to read ignore more real estate taxes than if you put a single house on that property. So from a financial yield to the town, there's no question that this is going to be greater. So there's another way of looking at it. All right, so we give up one problem, one building on one-point-seven acres, we pick up twelve units, it's going to generate a lot more real estate revenue, which resolves that. So there's both sides to be viewed, I think.
Yeah, but also you have the cost of the town, and we know that every single property that's developed has a cost of the town in terms of services. So you have to figure that in too. And sometimes that's why they always say that vacant land is more valuable to the town than than occupied land, because there are more town resources that are required.
But if I could count, every affordable unit is going to generate those same needs, right? And we we're willing to make that sacrifice for the sake of more affordable units.
It's like a dollar to three dollars or something, I've forgotten, per.
I think.
Anyway.
Heather wants to.
My only contribution is you're contributing seven more market rate plus the four affordables.
Yeah.
So it's a it's a greater growth of housing overall than your contribution of affordable housing, and that that's really the should be the focus of the discussion. Okay.
Any other discussion?
Was there a motion?
No.
No, there's been no motion yet.
Well, for the sake of this, I move that we recommend to the ZBA the project as proposed in this, I guess, what would you call it?
Dated January twenty-fifth.
Budget dated January twenty-fifth, twenty sixteen.
You have a motion?
You have a second?
I thought you were going to use, I thought you were going to say the McGansett Crossing LLC.
Well, obviously, well, McGansett Crossing LLC, just.
Okay, so you're finished on that? Okay, I'll second.
Further discussion?
If I may, Mr. Chairman, just want to make sure so it's clear that we're sending to, once you do vote, you have the motion, everything, that it's, you know, the four is going to be the three, four affordable units, and also the modifications to the plans that were presented the last time. It was the, you know, modifications to the site plan and additional ten units to additional two units.
Oh, and that's included in your budget plan here?
Yes.
Right, correct.
So the motion is to approve the amended plans that we received two weeks ago, but with the new budget proposal, with the three affordable, the one-ten percent, and the eight market units.
That's correct.
We have motion and second? Further discussion? Well, I guess I'm still really inclined to really hope for that one-ten to be in a fourth on affordable housing. I think the idea of us saying the precedent already that we're okay with the net, the minimum affordable housing in a project that really we are putting forward, that's what the LIP does, is that the town is taking that on. Again, if the town's gonna take it on, I'm okay with trying to figure out a way that the town contributes financially also. And so my feeling would, I wish we could have, I really appreciate what's come back, and if there's a way that it can come back with some budgeting that makes that fourth one affordable by the town's input, I would be more inclined to go with that.
So.
I don't know how to word that. Sam?
Well, I mean, I agree with you a hundred percent. To me, that's why we set as our strategic plan to have an economic development person. We need somebody that proactively tries to make these kinds of things happen on a negotiating basis through working groups and what have you. We need somebody that's serving that role, because we're relying on people like Michael here to come forward with private money, supporting a forty B project that falls into one of the three categories, because there is a local action unit version of forty B, where the town contributes land or contributes money. Well, that's not what this is. This is in that median ground between a non-LIP forty B and the local action unit forty B. And this is one of three ways to go, you know, and this is the, you know, the in-between road, or in-between way. I, you know, that's that's what I'm dealing with. And I, these projects aren't jumping at us with any frequency, and it bothers me, because it's fine for us to say, you know, we want more affordable units. How? We don't we don't have anybody that's helping us generate that production plan that you're talking about.
Haven't seen the most recent.
I would say, I was just going to say the same thing, but that's not for this.
That's not for this discussion.
We won't go on that discussion, not yet.
Would be nice to have.
Let's just, let's just finish this up. We have a motion and a second.
Well, that's my rationale.
Okay.
I'm still want some more discussion, because I have a feeling the way it's gonna go right now.
I, yeah, I'd like more discussion, too.
Is there any chance, Michael, you could come back with hearing where we stand and a financial picture that maybe does throw the town into the picks into the mix?
You know, I sort of agree with Mr. Peterson that, you know, we submitted this a year ago, and those discussions, I think if we would have had back then with someone who could have reviewed this and said, hey, wouldn't it been nice, you know, for us to come back and request more, to request some funding, my experience is that's probably about a six-month process. And we really wanted to start this project this spring. It's already been delayed quite a long time. And the further that we delay, you know, costs are just going up these days, unfortunately. So I don't want to paint any rosy pictures that we'd be able to come back and things would be, you know, be any better. We already know that if we had that eighty percent unit, we're down to ten percent. We already know that if we had that 80 percent unit, we're down to 10 percent. So it'd be, be very difficult. I wish we would have had these discussions six or eight months ago, and we might have been able to, you know, to parallel the process of the lift along with the financing for it. That would have been a great way to, to, to package this up in order to get there, if that was the board's consideration.
Just to help the discussion, just remember, this is not the end of the road. The end of the road is the zoning board of appeals. And this development plan that you are appearing to endorse has a significant increase in density for, for a parcel of the size 1.7 acres. To add two more units to that property is, is a significant increase. The zoning board may or may not be satisfied with what you're satisfied with. And I think you can probably, through conversation, develop something that endorses the plan moving forward as it is, with a hope and expectation that through an additional process that you, you can, can get to the 80 percent on the last unit. But I, I mean, you don't want to be, I mean, clearly there's a desire to advance this, to move it forward, to give Mr. Glass the opportunity to, to, to do that if possible. So just, you know, make that comment to see if you can, maybe Mr. Patterson can find a way to amend his motion to help his colleagues along.
I don't know what words to offer.
If I made a, again, for the record, Peter Freeman representing the applicant, just a few, I hope, quick points, because I understand and sincerely respect everything that everybody said. I think the way you can do it, if not the exact language, is that you would support and approve the motion that's already been made and seconded, and simply add as a recommendation, but not a requirement, based on good faith with an applicant who is based here in town, that the effort be made to bring what would be a moderate unit, 110 percent, down to the affordable price through an effort to, to obtain some subsidy. And therefore, it comes through that that's a recommendation, which I think can address and does address your policy concern. On that point, I'd also just quickly point out that actually as a modification of an existing project, I think it is legitimate distinction. In the future, when you have brand-new applications, we are starting from the CATCO, you can come up with whatever specific policy you want. But this is unique in that it's an existing project that does need to be modified. And as you discussed, yes, it's, you know, you folks have to be comfortable. But I think that's legitimate distinction. And then the final quick point is only that, albeit it doesn't count on the subsidized housing inventory, I'm on the board of many nonprofits on the Cape. And what we hear time and time again from employers is, you know, we have, if they're not the lower end, but we have a lot of employees either who on their own or together with spouses or partners, make more than the minimum of the 80 percent, rather, the maximum of the 80 percent. And that 100, 110 percent area is what a lot of the employers say we really need. I remember when Cape Cod Hospital lost middle management because they couldn't find housing, you know, that was affordable for that middle management. And they were above the so-called lower moderate income in terms of the 80 percent. So, you know, again, forgive the pitch, but it's sincere, and, and I know you have a great client and a great, I have a great client, you have a great applicant. And it really, to me, it can be a real win-win in that you, you get something that truly is unique in that you have the, the up to 80 percent, and then you have this so-called workforce, the 110 percent, that a lot of nonprofits are really seeing a need for. Thanks.
Mr. Patterson?
The other thing I would say is that, okay, if we could come up with $90,000, we could put it into this project, but we could put it into the next project, too. I mean, this money doesn't grow on trees. It's hard to come by, and we have reserves at CPC, we have the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, right? But we're going to need more projects. And so that money can remain in reserves and be used in future projects where we have some time. Whereas this one's, what did it say, shovel-ready?
But if we don't show some support for projects, we're not going to have any projects.
Precisely.
I do think if we had a vote of the board right now of this project with 40, 80 percent units, you're getting enough support for it. If that's, if the motion had been that, I know that we'd, I feel that we would, all four would be in support of it. It is, the only thing holding us back is the difference between that one unit being 100 percent, 10 percent, and 80 percent.
I'm more than willing to modify my motion to include the wish of the select, that in fact, there be four units at 80 percent of AMI. Even though, we're not saying it's a make or break issue.
Recommended.
It is our recommendation that four of those units actually be at 80 percent AMI.
That we're approving the.
Three.
Our decisions to approve it the way it is with the recommendation and hope that there could be four units there, 80 percent, with whatever creative financing can be done. And we would be willing to put our support behind the request for town financing.
Are you talking about through the Select, the CPC?
If you think that's the way that you're going to get the 110 to the 80 is the difference of that $90,000, you're, you're concerned about the $90,000 difference, and can the town come up with that?
Well, I think Mr. Glass, Mr. Glass is concerned about the $90,000. I wasn't as concerned about it, but. Developer is, for a good reason, but.
Can I say that, I mean, for this to go through a CPC process, you're probably talking about over a year. To go through an application process and be vetted out and compared with other projects. So we're really talking about delaying this probably 18 months.
Well, no, we're not, because it's just a recommendation.
I understand. But I mean, if you were really serious about coming up with public money to support this in the form of $90,000, you, it's not realistic to think that that's going to happen in a couple of months.
Heather?
I don't think this board needs to find that way. You can make a policy recommendation that you endorse the project as presented with the recommendation and goal that they find a way to create the fourth unit at 80 percent. Doesn't say it has to be, it says that's what, what your desire is, understanding that this is where it stands today, you're hoping that by the time it's, it's awarded and permitted by the zoning board of appeals, that's where they can get. That's, that's, you don't have, you don't have to do that.
I thought that's what I did. I amended my motion to include that. You agree with it? You're the second, right?
I am the second.
So, okay, so we'll let that be the motion.
Okay.
She's only said it three times.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of the new motion as it's been worded? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you for your excellent hard work. Next item on our agenda was a discussion of the transportation element for the local comprehensive plan. We're still actually waiting for the exact wording from the planning board on that, so we will put that on our future agenda. Next item is to appoint the new AMVets representative to the Veterans Council Committee. And we have a letter from Philip Retard, the commander of the South AMVets, and appointing that Lionel Hall has been appointed by the AMVets to replace Jim Sawyer as their representative, and that we just need to affirm that appointment by the AMVets.
Make a motion to confirm the appointment.
Second.
All right.
Just want to make the point, if it's all right, Mr. Chair, that Lionel's been a member of the affirmative action committee, that liaison too, and is a great active member with great ideas, so I'm sure he'll serve well.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, the ayes have it. Moving on to individual selectmen's report. Mr. Patterson?
Al Starhawk would be one. Let's see. First of all, I, I attended, at Dave Viera's invitation after the opiate coalition of Falmouth meeting, I attended the Massachusetts House deliberation on their bill that they're putting out. And we actually had a chance to go down, and I might say that Tim Madden joined us as well, so that our two representatives representing Falmouth, plus four of us from that coalition, went down onto the House floor and were introduced by the speaker. So our presence was felt, and we actually got a round of applause for being there to support them in their efforts. Let's see, I attended the ZBA hearing, the school committee meeting that, where Nancy Taylor was actually, you know, selected as a new superintendent of schools. I was delighted to participate in, along with other selectmen, in the no-place-for-hate breakfast on Martin Luther King Day, it was a very moving breakfast and series of presentations. Our Congressman Keating, William Keating spoke there and spoke very eloquently about the need for, you know, supporting diversity and mutual respect for other people and equal opportunity as well. FinCom kicked off its meeting, looking at the budget. They were not prepared to go into detail on many efforts, because they just received the budget book, but then their members hadn't actually gone out and talked to our department chairman, but that's underway. Already mentioned the Massachusetts Municipal Association meeting, and my fellow selectmen, Sue Moran and Pat Flynn, Joy, Governor Baker, Lieutenant Governor Polito, both restated their commitment to supporting local efforts. And many presenters mentioned how important it was, the government at the local level was, and how much more really in tune we were to our constituents than those at the state and federal level, who are much further away and much more removed from the everyday lives of people, the legislation and our, or our acts affect. So it's, it was interesting, and I always really enjoy hearing the perspective of other selectmen and other councilmen and town managers from across the state and hearing their experience in many of the areas that we're facing coming up. So there was a very nice discussion about building projects of various kinds, including those under the Massachusetts School Building Association for school projects, and some of the experience that they had, and some of the changes that have occurred over the last 10 years. And some of these changes, I wish it had happened a lot sooner, because I don't think we would have got to as much trouble with our high school renovation project. And so it's nice to get some of that briefing and hear their experiences. There were three panels that talked about their experiences in Lexington. And, you know, it's at least a heads up on what we can do in, in future projects here in town. Similarly, you heard the EDIC representatives talk about the last mile for broadband access. I went to a briefing on local cable services and contracts, renewing those contracts, and some of the issues associated with kind of rolling out a community broadband system. And there are a lot of pitfalls. But we have some towns in Massachusetts that are actually going through this process right now, and a few of them made comments and shared some of theirs' experience, so we can tap them as resources as we attempt maybe to look at how we might provide it. And I would say, I, I think, you know, again, on the economic development area, you know, I think it's really important that we have our sense of 17th century roots here, you know, in our historic preservation. By golly, I think we've got to really think about what we need to do to turn this into a truly 21st century community as well. And we know what technology has been doing, and we better be thinking about the kind of infrastructure that we need to facilitate keeping us in a really vital, growing, 21st century kind of economy. So it was nice to sit in on that session and hear some of other people's experience and think about how we can actually use that experience in maybe making our progression into that 21st century technology a little smoother. And I guess we'll stop at that. Thanks.
Well, I, I just wanted to comment from the MMA meeting, was the opening session with the presentation by Guy Raz, who's, I don't know what they call him. He's, he has a program on NPR, yeah.
It's Ted Powers.
What's it called?
Ted.
Ted? Anyway, but what he really talked about was how, how public officials, because that's everybody there, where, most of them were all selectman town managers, engage in the community. And he talked about, you know, telling the story, telling the story to, of what we do here to the community, and how do we do that? And how do we engage people? And that you can't wait for people to come to you, you have to go where they are, because they want, they want to talk to you on their turf, not on your turf. And I think we've all known that for a long, long time, that the, but it also, I think, if we talk about it maybe at another time, not, certainly not now, is, it has some implications to how we felt about the last town meeting. And, you know, what was it that caused that little, you know, upswell of emotion on the part of some people? And maybe by taking some of the concepts that, that Guy Raz had, had given us, it might help us to in our town meeting. So anyway, something to think about, because I thought, I came away from that, I listened to almost every single word, because everything he said was relevant to, to how we perform and how we, how we carry out and execute our work.
And just to echo that, because you and I talked about this, I had the exact same feeling, and his major point was, people, it, it's actually more difficult to know the other side and to know your community, because we, you know, we have internet, we have, you know, smartphones, we have, so to, when you actually face-to-face understand people, you, you actually can make more progress, because you can really understand each other's perspectives. And so it went a long way in connecting back with No Guff Day today. And Tim Madden was there, David Viera was there, Benny Dimasito, all came to Falmouth No Guff Day. And as the chair brought out, the YouTube video is, everyone should see it, and it's really a great example of where we should kind of circle back and maybe do what you've been talking about, which is the sense of place. And to, to really kind of reaffirm our commitment, so that the entire community understands, you know, not just the selectmen, all of the boards, all of the folks that work for the town, the town manager's office, everyone really has the same positive goal to, to make the town the best it can be, you know, and really to make sure everyone can afford it, and, and that we, we need to kind of get back to, to those roots and really listen to what people suggest. And for, you know, for people to make, you know, helpful comments, so that, you know, as selectmen, even at town meeting, we learn things there, because we don't always get an opportunity to go out and hear everyone's view. So I, I think your point is, is very well taken, and maybe we should look at the sense of place and work toward that.
Yeah, we've got to work toward that, definitely.
Anyone else? Mr. Susan?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. I, both I and Heather were also pleased to attend the annual Massachusetts Municipal Association meeting Friday and Saturday. It's always enlightening and good sessions, as has been noted. I do want to also note that I've appointed longtime deputy chief of Fire Department, Michael Small, as the acting chief of fire with the retirement of Chief Mark Sullivan. And Mike is also our acting emergency operations director, and he works steadfastly in monitoring storm conditions for this past major storm event, along with others. And I want to offer my compliments to Public Works Department, as been noted earlier, Police and Fire for their collaborative emergency operations during the Saturday and Sunday winter storm, the first real test force of this past winter, and I thank all for their diligent work in that regard. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned. Thank you all.